I'd also like to excuse, uh, Lisa Bellson and James Tieda. Okay, thank you.
How's it going?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We were there holidays. Kind of a whirlwind as a teacher. You've been there, you know, that holiday break and you're back in the middle of a quick race to the end of the year. Time flies like that, so I'm looking forward to it because I'm tired of this cold weather, as I think most of all of you are as well. I do have a quick presentation that I'm just gonna give Bob and I for our conversation with the parent today. That's what I do, two things. Uh, one, to kind of give recap of the process that we undertook in order to get where we are today in terms of the goal-setting process. Second goal is to help facilitate a conversation regarding the action plan that Bob and his administrative staff did nicely. Spent a lot of time putting that together, and so I'll walk you through that. There's really time for you to ask questions. You gotta get some clarity on it, um, and you can kind of move forward from there. And so if you just, uh, hold on one minute here, we'll just see if that's about ready to get set up.
Are they new? Has there been some revisions or not?
There's a couple of small revisions, sorry. They're real small. You could mark up a few ones. Essentially, if you turn to, really one, if it's all around, you turn to maybe sixteen and seventeen. One, the strategy on page sixteen is the correct strategy. Strategy on page fifteen is the wrong strategy. Page sixteen is the strategy one, which really is the type of two sixty.
So it's probably a little bit on three seventy.
Strike seven is the strategy, really, is the strategy. So that's been corrected. Now, down to the, maybe directed in one way to the other.
Oh.
I think it is, because they look identical.
Yeah, so that is not right. I'd get you.
No, 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 it's okay. I, I printed it offline.
Then on page six, none of you have this one in mind, but implementation, that first word on the medical on the second one.
Hold on.
On page six. It's not, it's really just the end got mixed over. Those are the elements.
Twelve is a small one. Just missing the word, capital. Page twelve under attainable and achievable. I think when we were writing it, it ended up on another page somewhere, so it ends up being eliminated. So it should say attainable, achievable, G M.
Yep.
I'll call the name and add it.
So page twelve?
Yes. Achievable, achievable.
The G M.
I'm sure not a problem.
We had to eliminate.
Is that?
Yeah. We were supposed to eliminate.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Saving grace, the state does have surplus this year. Education advocates coming out full force, saying that it will fund our schools. How it's gonna be divvied up remains to be seen. I guess we'll wait till the State, the State Address, that's a little bit late this year because of the passing of, uh, Mario Senior. It was unfortunate. I mean, I guess it's gonna align both the State, the State Address and what I thought.
That's my theory.
That's what I hear as well.
Does that happen? So the surplus will be competitive?
Oh, sure.
Something for schools that have.
Of course, we will be offering our webinar on the State of the State, getting this, but insight into how that's gonna impact education. And I will add this as a side note, since I run webinars, it falls under my domain now, as of this year. I took over webinars, and the great thing about it is all webinars now are free to members. So any type of webinar that we offer, as a matter of fact, I don't know if you follow the newspapers at all, but in Shenandoah, a couple of months ago, they had that controversy over their transgender policy. Uh, I actually went to that board meeting when they voted on it. Very interested to hear the perspective, so we're gonna be having a webinar just talking a little bit, uh, sort of twenty first of this month, talking about transgender students' policy that could be implemented, rights of transgender students. So, um, again, if they're free next month, we're gonna be talking about K solar. I don't know if you're familiar with K solar, but it is a part of initiative undertaken by New York State. It's about five billion dollar, I think it's part of a five billion dollar grant in which schools basically can apply for this. Any school district can do it, and essentially what they're looking to do is create cheaper renewable sources of energy through solar. And so some school districts have undergone a process. I think it's wonderful. A lot of times you said, instead of those solar panels, they not only get the energy that they need, but during certain times they're actually able to get a bag to the grid and reap a little bit of benefit. So school districts are finding ways to cut costs. So just a little bit of P R while we're waiting. Um, I will say about the goal-setting process, thank you for inviting me again. This has been wonderful. Normally, when I come out and I work with boards when I'm doing the goal-setting process, I usually walk them through the process. They establish the means to do it. We get them started, and then I never get to see the end results, whether it be email or something. They'll just say, well, here's what we came up with. So thank you again for allowing me to come back time and again in order to work with you. You guys were wonderful to work with. The process I think really was undertaken quite nicely, so I don't know what's happening there, but I can kind of go on and give you a recap of sort of what we went through, and if they get the presi up there, that's fine. It's just all nice visuals that I can leave you through as well. So essentially, when, you know, I was contacted, the idea was you were looking for a process, a new process in order to create goals for the district. And so when I kind of stepped in, I said, the whole setting process and wherever we advocated, and I've seen it on the whole, it was a very collaborative process between the board, the superintendent, and the administrative staff as well. At the board level, it's always good to get that inside perspective, because who knows the needs of the district better than the people who are running the district? Specifically, sometimes those who are in charge of the finances as well. Excellent, I do have that up there, and we'll sit here if I, I don't know. Is, is there a remote C J?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to get set up on this.
Excellent. So as I said, the, the process that we advocated for was very collaborative. And, uh, one thing that I, you know, stress from time to again is the idea of focus. Not only on the work at hand, but also the main important thing of why we're establishing goals is to focus on the students of New Hartford, because we gotta keep them front and center all the time, because this is what this institution was founded for. It was founded for the students to ensure that they are getting the knowledge and skills and extracurriculars and everything that comes with that great educational experience here at New Hartford. We know that our economy has shifted and is gonna continue shifting. The way that you and I learned when we went to school is very different from the way kids today are learning. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All I have to do is look at my son who's three years old. We got an iPad mini for Christmas, because he's at that age now, and I was shocked at this. Fighting over my iPad between he and his older sister, tears would ensue, hitting, you name it. So we got him an iPad. Unbelievable what this kid can do. He sits there and he watches YouTube videos. He can't read, but he knows how to navigate. You and I never had those things when we were kids, and so this is the way children are learning today. And so when we focus on education and we look at the needs of the district, that's part of what's encapsulated here in those goals as well. And so part of what I already mentioned here, just to kind of give you a recap of the goal-setting process, I said already that focus is important. Sometimes, working at the board level, people come in with their own personal agendas. They would like to see something unfold within the district, and oftentimes they push that without realizing that there might not be resources available. Other people may not agree with the type of direction that that individual board member wants to take. And so at the end of the day, it's always important to focus on what are within the best interests of the students, and specifically, since we're here, the students of New Hartford. So the goal-setting process that really I talked about, we're not talking about something that unfolds in just one year. You wipe your hands and then you're done. We're talking about creating and implementing a cycle of continuous improvement, where we're thinking systemically throughout the system, but we're also acting strategically in the sense of what is it that this district needs in order to better service the children who attend this, uh, who attend these schools? Starting point, and we kind of really didn't do this to a certain degree, um, but I think that, at, at the whole level, I think we have sort of a collaborative vision of where this district is heading. I think you have an understanding of the mission, why this district exists. Those are important elements when you're formulating goals, because goals can help lead to that vision, and it can help fulfill the mission for why the district was founded. From there, we did a little bit of this, uh, this year, and I think that as you progress through the years, you may have some turnover on your board and you acclimate those new individuals, that the data piece is gonna become extremely important. Specifically, now that, you know, we're gonna be taking a look at this action plan, a lot of this is gonna be coming back to you in the form of data to, to determine, well, okay, first of all, do we have a baseline? Not only do we have a baseline, but do we have an idea of where we need to be so we can measure that growth? And periodically, you should be receiving data reports from the superintendent, or whether it be the administrative staff, giving you an idea of how they're progressing towards these goals as well. So we performed a needs assessment, where we sat down and we kind of thought about the various elements that go into the district. We looked at the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are some of the outside forces that are beyond our control that could impact things here within the district itself? From there, we set the goals. Uh, the administrative team, they set an action plan. What are the strategies now in order for the district to work towards those goals? Part of your job, and as I already mentioned, is to monitor, support, and assess the impact that this action plan is having on the district. Is it working? Is it not working? If it's not working, well, why isn't it working? Are there more resources that we could divert? Is there a new strategy we could take in order for us to realize those? All too often, boards will fashion goals, administrative team will come up with an action plan, and then that's it. They don't check in on the progress, and at the end of the year, they really don't know how well they worked towards those goals. And specifically, when it comes down to the evaluation of the superintendent, you definitely wanna take a look and, and understand, well, what is the plan that was put in place? How well did they lead the district in attaining those goals? But also on the flip side of that, we're talking about accountability, and the board also needs to be accountable for that as well, because you also wanna think, was I monitoring? Was I giving and lending that support? Did we have those fluid conversations in order to lend that support so we, as a district, can reach that? Making adjustments and aligning resources, as I already mentioned. And so by the end of next year, I'm sorry, but by the time you sit down next year, your job is gonna be a little bit easier, because you fashion those broad-based goals. I envision those to continue, and that's a great starting point for a conversation, because within those goals that you devised, you really can pick out a vision, because it's forward-focused. You're thinking about what do we want this district to be, to become within the future? How can we attain it? How can we work towards them? And so the cycle begins year after year. Some of the goals in this action plan, they're multi-year. Sometimes, multi-year problems require multi-year solutions. Some of these might be able to be implemented within a year, and so we're gonna be going through those very shortly. One of the things that I mentioned before is that when I was a teacher, at any given year, I probably could not tell you what the goals of that specific district was. It's not to say they didn't fashion goals or weren't working towards them. For whatever reason, on any given year, I didn't know that. I don't know if that was my fault or not, but we wanna think about cascading goals, meaning that you're not just setting goals at the top level, but you're ensuring that they filter down into the teachers in the classroom, that everybody's on the same page. And as we take a look, I've kind of talked about this before, but the reporting comes back to you, the board, understanding how well it's working, how well the implementation is going. As I already mentioned, sort of the starting point where we undertook was we filled out what is referred to as that SWOT analysis, strengths, the opportunities, the weaknesses, and the threats. From there, what we were able to do was to take a look at that SWOT analysis as a whole, and we generated some very broad goal categories. From there, what we did is we combed through all of the SWOT analysis, and we began to categorize that information underneath each one of those topic areas. And we began to prioritize what we felt were the highest needs or the areas that we should give our greatest attention to, and kind of dwindled it down that way. From there, we wrote our broad-based goal statements, and you guys did a fabulous job. You worked very collaboratively together. I was very impressed at how well you were able to compromise and come up with the garbage that everybody at the end of the day was, felt that they had a part in and were happy with. So the writings of, uh, writing of the goals as well, so again, we had our goal statement. I'm not gonna go through all of these. We have our SMART goal, and again, part of this, and it depends upon the board and the board's level of comfort. Sometimes they hand that off to the superintendent, or they work collaboratively with the superintendent to develop sort of those specific targeted areas. And then, of course, you have the objections and objectives and the action plan, in which Bob and the administrative staff worked very nicely, and we're gonna go over in just a few minutes here. Now, I left this up here, because this was originally the goal set that we started to develop. And if you think back, we had five broad categories that we initially thought we were gonna focus in on. We had our safe school climate, we had high academic standards, fiscal responsibility, technologically advanced schools, transfer, uh, transparent communication. This went through a process of refinement, and this is what should happen with goals, because we took that and we decided, you know what? All of these categories can be refined, and we could actually collapse some of these. And so what we ended up with was right here. I'm not gonna go through these since they are reflected in the document, but we ended up with student achievement, fiscal responsibility, community relations, and technology. And again, by the time you come back next year and you're ready to, oh, you're saying next year, I'm stuck in twenty fourteen. This year, it sounds weird already, when you come back this year and you sit down, this is what you're gonna be primarily looking at. Do we wanna continue these goals? Do they need some sort of refinement, improvement? And then you can re-adopt them. If you think that we missed one, we can definitely add another one when we get to that juncture. So again, I won't read all through these, because they are reflected in the document, and we've gone over them before. So once that happened, the next part of the puzzle that realistically fell under, you know, Bob's charge here, is to create that action plan. He sat down with his administrative staff, and I liked the way that Bob undertook this, because he looked at the action plan. He said, you know what? We wanna formulate this using the SMART goal acronym. We wanna create goals and objectives that are specific. We wanna make sure that they're measurable, so we can see the growth and how well we're working towards them. We wanna ensure that this is something that is attainable within the district. We wanna ensure that they are relevant. We also wanna ensure that they are time-bound, meaning that we're not just creating goals and then just letting them go on forever, that hopefully they have a start date, they may have an end date sometimes. You want, you're not gonna have an end date. If you're talking about student performance, that's something that will be continually ongoing. And really, what we fashioned throughout this whole process is we've utilized that goal-setting framework. And if we start at the top again, you have a district vision or collective vision, sometimes it's not that specific statement, but it's that general understanding of where the school district is heading. You have your mission, and those two things I mentioned earlier are key elements, because then we created our goal areas. Up here, I only showed three. We came up with four. From there, we generated the broad-based goal categories. Really, at the board level, that is part of your job in the sense that as the board, you are leaders, and you should be leading the district towards the future. Yes, it's important to be cognizant of what's happening around you today, because that will shape tomorrow, but in the same degree, at, at the board level, you're leading the district into the future. And I really like the statements you guys came up with, because they are. They're visionary in a sense, but they're realistic and they're attainable. That just says thank you, because it's an old one. All right, so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna kind of jump in now. We wanna take a look at the action plan that was created. This is really a time for you as the board to ask questions towards the administrators. I'm gonna help facilitate the discussion as best as possible. One thing that we wanna kind of avoid, because it's easy to do, is to get bogged down in sort of the minutia. Let's not pluck these apart when we're looking at them under the microscope, but realistically, our goal today is to understand what is the action plan that the administrative staff in the district is going to undertake in order to realize the goals in which we have formulated. So we're gonna start off on the first page, and student achievement. I won't read that, but I like the way that this is broken down, because we're gonna take a look underneath student achievement. We have our first strategy. And the strategy is to utilize comprehensive data and research-based strategies to identify student needs. This is the trend of education. This is what school districts across the country are doing. They're looking at data in order to help make improvements. And so you'll take a look at the very first desired result. Analyze subgroup data for limited English proficiency, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students to establish baseline and trend data to measure student growth. One of the things that came out of our conversations, and this is a pretty well-known fact across New York State, New Hartford is known for top-quality education. You have a lot of top-achieving students, but that doesn't mean there aren't students within the district that you need help. We definitely don't want them to slip through the cracks, and so, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong here, that really what we're talking about here is looking at those subgroups. How are they performing? And we wanna establish a baseline in order to determine whether or not our efforts are impacting their student achievement in the correct path. And so specifically, they're gonna compare subgroup performance student data, uh, to, uh, I'm sorry. Compare subgroup performance to student performance in non-subgroups. So essentially, we're looking at where are they currently? Theoretically, looking at those who are not in those subgroups, where should they be? Because that's gonna give you an idea of sort of the gap in which we kind of want to reduce as much as possible, if not eliminate or exceed. So how are we gonna measure this? We're gonna be using New York State assessments, but also local assessments as well. How is it attainable and achievable? We have report findings at staffing and curriculum meetings. We have the building data meetings and board and education meetings. So again, we're talking about this data being universal in the sense that we have people in the district that are using it in order to determine where are the students that we need to target? How can we best help them in order to make those improvements? And so it's timely between December twenty fourteen to March twenty fifteen.
I have two questions.
Absolutely.
First is a real general one. Is, and I'm sorry, I'm kinda hoarse now. Is twenty-five pages of SMART goals too much?
I knew that was gonna come.
Well, be, because that was part, that's what started all of this. We used to have twenty-five pages of goals, and did we just switch the heading? And now we have twenty-five pages of SMART goals, not vision statements. Is this, should this be pared down? Should we be looking to carve it down?
Now, the one thing that I'm gonna ask you to do is, as we go through these, understand, and this is sort of a pitfall or a misconception of goal setting. A lot of times, people believe that if I'm establishing goals and the administrative staff is generating an action plan, everything has to be new. We're reinventing the wheel. As a matter of fact, as we go through these, some of the initiatives in here are already being undertaken within the district. They just happen to align to the goals in which you've established. And so if we're looking at attainment of goals, and if it is an initiative that's already being undertaken, or if it's a, or if it's mandated by the state, it's reflected in this document. So to kind of answer your question in a roundabout fashion, I've seen districts, Shenandoah, for example, creates a hefty document like this. They're a very large district. Is this too much? That's really a question for you and the board to ask yourselves. Obviously, I don't think that Bob, the administrative staff, would generate twenty-five pages of SMART roles and then realize that they buried themselves in, in an endless pursuit of improvement efforts which they can't attain.
It's an attempt to encapsulate all the things that are, it's also an attempt to encapsulate some of the things we have to do, because for our regulations and all, I have to do these things, like career technology. There's a lot of time that goes into that. It should be reflected in the local books, that we're doing that work. Certainly, you can pare some of these down, but we are doing that work. And we wanted to reflect, it's a comprehensive task to reflect all of you in terms of what you've mentioned for various committee rules or board goals. So these are the items that, these are, this is the work that's going on at the district.
Right.
We try to reflect it all. And again, these can be revised, you can add to them, you can pare them down, but it was our attempt to try and reflect how we're doing that.
I think that was the question that went through my head. How much of this is what we're doing already, and how much of this is new? And is there a way to identify maybe the key areas of what we should be working on more than others? If we're doing a lot of this already, or which of these are new, and then which one then we should focus on more?
To come to you, sorry.
I think part of it too is that it's many of these things are things that we have, I know on budget and finance, we receive reports out on, um, when I was on stamping curriculum, that we receive reports out on, um, so it's. My understanding of this, of what we were kind of looking for here, and correct me if I'm wrong, would, is that, that some of the things would be, I don't wanna say new, but we would write them down here, so there were things that we kept our eye on, as opposed to, you know, certainly nothing in here is stuff that was never happening in the district, and now this is brand-new. I think it's all stuff that we've been doing in one level or the other, but putting it on this plan brings it to the forefront for us in terms of the work that we're doing. I think in order to pare this down, there has to be a trust on our part that some of the things, I'll go budget and finance, because that's what I'm most familiar with, um, you know, adopting a budget that maintains our program to the full class size. We do that every year. We work hard to do that every year. Is that something, you know, I mean, I guess that, that's an illustration of the point that Bob was just making. Is that something that we feel like we need to write down every single year and say, this is something we're gonna keep our eye on? Or can we just say, we know that this is something that we've done every single year since then? Always what we're talking about.
Seventy-five or eighty percent of the time, people working.
Oh, I totally agree with you.
Do we reflect it? And it's a good question, but.
I don't know, yes, I'll just throw that.
Try and continue that as well.
I understand.
But why?
Why?
You're pointing to, why are you continuing? What, what's the effect? No, 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 that, um.
Well, obviously, trying to maintain programs of traditional class-size models and keep the programs at the top.
But why?
Why?
Yeah.
Because the end result, what the students receive in that education, the end and outcomes of what those students receive become college, career, and citizen.
So how is that measured?
College, what measure?
What you just said.
College and career, right?
Yeah.
By our exit exams and our.
Graduation rates.
Our grades.
Graduation rates.
See, so where I'm coming from, along the same line, is that is a, that is part of what you guys are doing, but for me, I would see a specific measurement associated with that. Now, how you go about doing that is part of this, but we're gonna maintain a ninety-whatever percent graduation rate. I'm gonna do this, and here's how we're going to do that.
And that is found in the document, in the sense that there is an action plan associated with this. Um, you know, for example, the very first one that we wintered, we're talking about establishing a baseline, since we're looking at subgroups, we really don't have that data necessarily available to us.
It's true. See, I mean, let's go, let's go with that one. And then, again, you know, the, the volume, um, this, this first one here, the state does that for us. That's all you gotta do is get on the New York State website, and they compare those subgroups with our general population on Common Core test score. It's there. States are doing it for us. Matter of fact.
Well, the state level, they do, but we're talking also about bringing in local assessments as well. We're talking about kind of refining the microscope, because the local assessment are the ones that are generated within the district itself. So by looking at that data, we're talking about, am I adequately preparing them for those state exams? But also, am I teaching them the skills necessary in order for them to perform well and to go on to the next level, whether it be college or career? And so really, what you're talking about is focusing that microscope down in order to understand how can we, as a district, better serve them? Yes, the state gives you some information, but that's on a state exam. And, and elements that go into a state exam are very different from local assessments.
Well, we'd be assessed at the state level by, by our Common Core test results. And, for example, uh, the, the nought-eleven-uh-challenged kids scored fifty-one percent proficiency on the math overall as a district, and challenged, economically challenged, scored thirty-two percent. I mean, that's all out there, and so we know already that that's happening, so again.
I agree with you, yes.
You know, but that's right off the website from New York State Education.
But again, you're looking at it from the state's perspective, and so what, what I'm saying here is that, say, for example, I'm a student. I have, um, and I'm a special ed student. I, I get services. For example, I get a test ready, and I go over and I show up and I take a, take a state exam. And the state tells me that, oops, sorry, this is state exam. You don't get the test ready to you. That's gonna skew your results. And so what I'm saying is.
But it is what it is, isn't it? I mean, and for example, I mean, we know that our economically-challenged students are not meeting the state average in their subgroups. We know that. So again, the, the SMART goal, to me, would be that we're going to be in the top two percent. Like we tell the community, we're gonna be in the top two percent in all these subgroups, as well as the general population. And then, that's the measurement. So it's given to us right there, and, and how we go about doing that is what we should be looking at. But, but to me, the, the goal, the SMART goal is, we're gonna be, doesn't matter what subgroup we're in, or general population, we're gonna be in New Hartford, and here's the percentage that we're going to do, and here's how we're going to do that.
Well, yeah, if I could just.
Absolutely.
I just want to go a little bit of a detour, because, um, I actually went and looked at the, at the report cards, and the documents are always quoted, and I think numbers are funny, because off of those exact scorecards, I can make the following statements, and this is just to demonstrate how numbers can be tricked.
Okay.
Math overall, grades three through eight.
Yep.
The number of economically disadvantaged students taking the test in New Hartford decreased by fourteen percent year-to-year, and proficiency levels increased by eleven percent year-to-year.
And? English proficiency?
Math.
Math, scorecard, two thousand and fourteen. Multi-racial general education students.
Math scorecard 2014, racial general education students.
Yeah, we're getting. No. Well, no. But all I'm saying, no, but all I'm saying is, I don't necessarily agree with those numbers or those statements. What I'm saying is, I think in order to have viable, useful data, step one is for everybody to understand and agree with the data. And I don't think just pulling things off of the website and quoting one percentage versus another does that.
Okay.
Okay, and I just showed how if I wanted to spin in the opposite, I could say, we're getting richer and smarter. Okay? And I don't think that's the case. But I, but I also think that, that the report card, the SED's data, that isn't necessarily a hundred percent accurate, and I think Alan and the resources we have here can supplement that. And when we use that, then we get the full picture.
Okay, but how are we going to rank ourselves?
I don't know, but, but you have to be careful, in my opinion, with cherry picking specific percentages to either highlight a problem or highlight a solution.
Well, proficiency is proficiency. But anyway, I mean, I'm just saying, guys, we got to start with somewhere.
No, I, I agree.
And the state reform, the state reform agenda is, that database is it. That's what they're looking at. That's what they're going to measure us on. One big one I will tell you that sort of along the lines of what John was sort of saying is that you need to be very cautious when pulling the data. And what I mean by that, how many years does that span, that data? Is it just for one year or does that give you? There's, there's, no, it's 2003. The Allen Board. So first of all, we're talking about data that has passed the data. And to kind of be a supplement with John was saying, if you looked at the assessment that we've given in which we align the state tests on Common Core, and the students were not prepared to take that, and you looked at the results of that specific year, you would have been hanging their head in chains saying, what in the world happened? If we take a larger, a bigger global picture of what's happening, you'll see that X, Y, and Z factors were the result of those lower test scores.
That's fine.
So what we're talking about here, and we don't want to get down to, you know, too far to granular level, is that, what, really what this is telling us is to better understand the students out in Hartford. It's all well and good to pull data, and I think it is important to look at state.
It's a piece of the puzzle.
I think it's important to look at, at state data, but as John was saying, there's a larger picture at work in terms of how are students actually performing, what services are being offered, how can we best service those students? Because if the end result is for them to perform well on a state test, then, you know, the simple solution would be to create classes in which you specifically teach towards the test. Oh, no, I understand that. I, I understand that entirely, but again, you have to start with a baseline. And that's what this is trying to measure. Yeah, I understand that, but the state has already done that as far as they're concerned.
But I guess my question is, is using, and I would ask Alan because he would know better than I, is using the SED's report card an accurate baseline? Or should it be supplemented with some other additional data you have?
Well, I think, given the fact that we had, you know, so many students who didn't take the test, you know what I'm saying, that we, we should use data, other data points, which we do use. We use the Envision Math. We gather that data from the topic test. We gather our information from our ELA program, which is Journeys, and, you know, we gather our STAR data. So there are many data points that we gather in order to inform our decisions and inform instruction in the classroom. And it's also important to know that that K-2 band, they, that creates the foundation for when students go to third grade, so, you know, we're looking at that data across the board as well. And looking at trend data, you know, looking at a few years, keeping in mind that 2012, 13 was the first year of, for the Common Core assessments with the region's reform agenda, so the cut points changed dramatically. And I'm sure Jamie has seen that as he's worked with districts throughout the state. So do we use this as, as a data point? Yes, we certainly do, but we use several others as, as I.
Because you already have a baseline, right? This is something new that you're just doing this year.
Yeah, we have a baseline. Like, we have, we have scores that go back, you know, obviously several years. What we have done is we've looked at the last couple of years with the region's reform agenda, that's clearly become our new baseline, and that's what the commissioner released, not this summer, but last summer, was information about the, the new test scores should become your new baseline.
Well, I think that's what Ed was getting at partly because if, yeah, if we've already done a baseline, why are we establishing a baseline?
Well, that's my second.
Yeah. Well, we haven't necessarily, I mean, remember that the region's reform agenda, our first year of testing was 12, 13, so, you know, we're looking at that from year to year. So really, it is a new, a new baseline. I mean, that, that data is new to us.
But you've always been tracking how subgroups.
Oh, yeah.
What? Haven't you?
We, we have that data available to us.
Right, so I mean, ten years ago, I would hope you were still saying, well, this subgroup is performing.
Yeah, through your report card, you're able to look at all of your subgroups to look at the performance of those groups.
Okay.
So you're just changing the matrix you use to measure them? Well, we're changing because of the region's reform agenda.
The standards are different today than they were in previous years.
Yeah, we, previous to 2012, 13, we tested on the 2005 standards.
And another thing that happens, the cut scores change.
The cut scores change, and, and changed dramatically.
The changes, we really don't, one year doesn't make a difference.
The other piece, too. The other piece that I kind of wanted to add here is that the data that you pulled from the state, those are lagging indicators. They're passive, you can't change those scores. So essentially, part of what's encapsulated in this here is looking at leading indicators. How are the students currently performing? So you can change course in order for them to increase student achievement. And so we're looking at things like those local assessments that are going to be periodically through the year. Hopefully, those assessments are being aligned to those new state standards because that's going to give you kind of an accurate picture of how they may perform in the future on those exams. And so if you're talking about helping those students in the subgroups and you're utilizing the leading indicators, you can, you know, sort of chart a new course for those individuals.
I think, I promise that would be great.
Okay.
The only two points that I would make is that particularly in subgroups, it's, the future is so much more complicated than it was. It's related to attendance rates, it's related to free lunches, it's related to what's going on outside in their home life. You know, we don't control. So I mean, to, to look exclusively at test score data and say, well, that gives me a full picture of these individuals, I think is, is doing an injustice to the students. I think that it proves us to take a look at comprehensive data, which is inclusive of what's going on. I mean, we were talking about to use as an illustration, these are small subgroups. We were looking at our entire graduation rate, and we have a year when one kid drops out because his mom was sick, and another kid, you know, gets into an accident and can't finish the year, all of a sudden, our graduation drop rate drops to two percent. So when you have these very small subgroups of, you know, twenty or less students, or, you know, certainly less than thirty students in some cases, it, it doesn't take much. It's really on the margin of what causes a shift in test scores. So if you have half those kids or a quarter of those kids not show up to take the test, and we're using that exclusive marker as their performance, I just, I don't think it, it serves the district, and I don't think it serves those individual students as whole kids to say, well, you didn't do well on the test, we're going to teach you some more about the test. I think we need to ask ourselves what's really going on before we can, and I mean, across the country, people struggle with economically disadvantaged kids and how, how it happened to be successful.
But first, we have, but in order to address that, first, we have to know what's going on. So if, if there was a two percent increase in bad test scores or whatever, we need to know that happened, then we can be there. So I think right now, we're just saying, well, now we're going to really track or continue to track these subgroups.
But I think, I think we should be tracking across, I mean, I know that there's, we just started tracking now as part of APPR, right? Attendance, like in quarter hour increments or something like that. I mean, though, that's all data, I think that feeds into that picture. I think it will take us some time to compile. I don't think we can just use those state test scores, which are drastically different, even in terms of, in terms of the special education students, the accommodations that they were allowed a year ago, two years ago, that they're not allowed now.
Well, my bottom line, I don't care how we measure it, as long as you guys feel you're measuring it correctly with all the data that's available and you're transparent with, this is how we measure it.
I, I, you know, I agree with that. I, I just, I want to be able to tell our citizens, our taxpayers, that we are ranked accordingly. And right now, it is that public database, if they go on and see that FM, Pittsburgh, Whitesboro, Westmoreland are, are ahead of us in proficiency ratings regarding math. And I want to know what we're doing to get up the ladder because they're under the impression that they're in the top two percent of the country. And in the Common Core test results, we are barely making the top twenty percent in New York State. So I want to know how these SMART goals utilize that data and, and develop goals and percentages to get us up. And, and, and so if it's not this, that everybody in the world can see, that anybody moving to New Hartford or Westboro can see, then what is it? Not that, I think, well, they have very, great and valid points, but I think you're right in the sense that you need to take a more holistic approach when looking at subgroups because there are other factors that go into that. And I think that, that, you know, Bob would be, I can't speak to Bob, but I mean, I think that they would be receptive to the idea of looking at a wider pool of data, but really what we're talking about here is just kind of, from the get-go, since we do have the new region's reform in place, let's start sort of with this and kind of answer your, your question of how is this going to all unfold? The way that I kind of look at this document is very global approach, it's also systemic approach in the sense that a lot of these flow into one another. So not only are we going to be looking at these subgroups, but as we work our way through there, that there's other measures that are put in place in order to realize, you know, sort of this approach. For example, you know, if we skip ahead, we're looking at, there's things like technology. There's a great story out of Fort Edward, I believe it was, where the technology teacher there spent his own money and his own time, and he built this kind of machine, they call it, but you, you basically create, you program a computer, and then the machine itself does all the cuts for you. And the kids were learning how to make things like tic-tac-toe boards. I mean, it was phenomenal what they were able to do with that technology. And what he was saying is that a lot of the jobs that are in that area, they're looking for people that are skilled in that sense, you know, having those skills. And so kind of the roundabout approach to answer your question is that we're talking about ways to improve student achievement, and that there are things throughout this document that would be bringing that to light, and the technology component is just one of them that we're going to come across.
Okay, so we desire to analyze subgroup data for limited. Okay, so I think that's a good desired result. I think we're just saying, we want to be clear how we're doing.
And then next year, you can take that data and you can say, here's our baseline, and now we want to.
Yeah, and we don't need every, every ingredient in this. This is kind of the main heading, but I guess I would say to Alan, as you're doing this, keep stacking a curriculum up to date with how you came about this and worked with them, so it's not transparency with how you're measuring it, and then you guys can report us.
Just, just the other thing we've got to consider, your two, these SMART goals are going to be associated with performance pay, and there's nothing in that that, to me, warrants performance pay if it's achieved.
Well, when all said done, yeah, we want to know, did we achieve this goal or didn't we achieve this goal?
Yeah, and this one here, analyze subgroup data, we're already doing it, right? I mean, so, so to me, it's one of those ones that, okay, you know, but it's not, it's not something that we haven't already done, or it's a matter of business, and so it's not anything that, that you can award.
That was kind of my point of 25.
Yeah?
I guess it depends on what we're looking for. This, I guess, is going to be more along the lines of, here is more of a job description of what we want the administration to be doing, and then out of that comes a subset of aspirational performance-based targets to hit or something, or?
The other thing, the, the highness of this as well, this document is not only for the Board of Education, but it's also for the general public as well. And so hopefully, the general public will be able to get their hands on this, and I think it's important for those people to understand the inner workings and the initiatives that are being undertaken within the district as well. After fashioning these goals, to realize that there are things that are currently happening within the district, whether it be mandated or not, that are working towards those. And Ed, you had a great point about the scores because really, when you boil it down, how are districts within New York measured? Unfortunately, they are measured by state assessments that are reflected on that report card. And so, you know, the one caveat to that is that we don't want to get bogged down in those numbers themselves, and I think that this goal is really designed to take a closer look at the inner workings. And again, not only looking at those lagging indicators, but what leading indicators, and I like how that identified a lot of the things that can be looked at with the subgroup because it has been shown that, you know, the linklacy from school or absenteeism or excessive referrals does impact the student negatively and can impact.
It does.
Their student performance as well. And I think that, you know, as you move throughout this year, you know, especially when you come down and you, you know, you sit down and you're going to ask, well, okay, do we have now a baseline of where they are? You know, what percentage are they within? Where should they be? And now let's start taking a look at the larger picture. And so when you do sit down next to fashion goals, I think that this one specifically will go through an evolution where now you are going to be looking at, you know, different data points in order to really pinpoint ways to help those individuals out.
Well, I'll also say too, with regard to, certainly, we have very strong social education. With regard to economically disadvantaged students, I don't think New Hartford is as close to the University School of Bishop or Whitesboro to a degree, are designed to, to contend with populations like that. I mean, we can certainly address that, but I think we need information. You know, the University of Bishop School Bishop has six hundred programs in place, after-school programming, before-school programming, a million different things that they make available, the collaboration of nonprofits in the community. New Hartford's not built like that.
Yes.
So I think that there are.
That's the point.
Well, but I think the point is, is that in order to build something that's meaningful, you have to look at comprehensive data because those programs are not, they don't, the Boys and Girls Code doesn't go, well, look at those state test scores, we'll do this. It's really wraparound services. If we're going to provide that, we need to budget for it, we need to plan for it, and we need to see where that implementation is going to be.
Exactly. And I would agree, and I think, and I can't speak to Bob here, if I'm wrong, is that this is kind of the starting point, the stepping stone to work towards that. Because essentially, you need to understand the people that you service, and by understanding their needs, then you can start to develop the programs that will, you know, hopefully help those individuals and lead them to better success within the school. And so, as I mentioned before, I see this sort of as an evolutionary document. This is just phase one, if you want to call it that, sort of the stepstone that will lead down the path to really understand who are we servicing, what are the issues that they are contending with? Now let's take a look at, you know, kind of global level and figure out what's the best ways in which we can help these individuals improve. And if we don't have those services and programs put in place, what is the cause of the district? And kind of, you know, start reaching out that way.
I think, again, I think this aligns the stretch, that the strategy, the strategies that lead to those goals, and for sure, is to utilize comprehensive data and research-based strategies to identify student needs. From there, you would implement data analysis, inform instruction, which is required, and from there, you would provide job embedded professional development. And also, you use that comprehensive data, research-based strategy, and most instruction in, in that, in that, to see that increase.
Yeah, so it sort of cascades that way. You need to know what the debt is, you need to provide job embedded professional development, and then you provide student support.
Yeah.
You can't do, we can't get to the results until you go through the debt.
I understand, and, but the only thing that really matters is if it's working. And so the measurement, you know, so all these things are great. It's wonderful that that's what the administration wants to get done and to, to make those scores work. But what is it? You know what I mean? That's the measurement that, when we talk at the end of the year, that's the measurement I want to see is, what was it? What were the goals to increase it, and did you meet it?
But let me ask the question a different way then. So our state test scores are, okay, what would you change? Okay, what would you change?
Right. Oh, I do exactly what you said. If I looked at what I looked at regarding, you know, I mean, it's that data regarding...
He just said he would do exactly what I said.
Exactly. I knew exactly what you said. I would look, I would look at where resources can be placed. Now, it's twenty-five percent of students that took the Common Core exams three through eight, that's two hundred kids. Okay, so it's not a small group. I would look at where we can move some of our needs to facilitate that, change some programs, give more programs after school.
And I think to be able to answer that question, you have to know that those things are going to make a difference and you need to look at, I can say, I'll use a more important example. My daughter failed her AP value test, so she needs to study more, but you know what?
Thirty percent.
She was out sick. Well, what I'm saying, she was out sick, she did something else, she did something else, so those are the things that I need to change. But if I was just looking at the fact that she failed the test, I would say, oh, well, she didn't study enough. Or even worse, what the state does is, must be her teacher's mistakes, which I know is not the case.
Yeah.
See that YouTube video? I'm just going to change course for a minute because there's a great YouTube video, I think it kind of really enriches on those lines of what you're saying. It's a boy, I don't know how old he is, he could be like thirteen, fourteen years old. Surprises his dad with a grade that he got in math and the grade was maybe a sixty-seven. You're not talking about anything spectacular, you know, by any means, but the dad is so elated, he breaks down and he cries. He cannot believe that his son, who struggled in math, got a passing grade. And so the reason why I bring this up is because it's all well and good to say every student within Hartford is going to excel academically, but kind of along the lines of what you're saying is that not all students can reach that top performance. And so a sixty-seven, it is a great milestone for one individual where another individual will be devastated. My daughter came home with a sixty-seven, I'd be all over, I'd be achieving, and in her tutor. But you have one individual who, you know, worked his butt off and got a sixty, so I have a friend who's in, you know, similar lines. His daughter came home, she stinks at math, she got a passing grade in math, sixty-six. He was so proud, he gave her, you know, her cell phone early. And so I think the one thing that we kind of got to do now is just sort of table the discussion about the data piece and let's kind of work our way through here and then we can come back to this, you know, piece. Because I think as we work through here, as Bob, and I pointed out, is that a lot of this flows together and that other, that other part of these strategies are designed to support other pieces of it as well. So it is a very sort of systemic approach. And so the other piece to this that we're looking at in terms is that taking the school improvement plans and aligning them, changes, aligning the curriculum, aligning process at all levels, you really kind of want to create sort of a linear approach to student achievement. And I always found it very valuable when I was a teacher to sit down with my fellow colleagues at all levels and you discuss not only what they were doing in the classroom types of things that they needed at the various levels. And so you're talking about a support system that way in order to ensure that they are having the support. Again, the data piece is great because as students transition from one group to the next, it gives those teachers an idea of sort of the pool of kids that they are working with as well. And so we're really talking about the development base here, gathering the data and then looking at strategies, strategic plans to address instructional and curricular needs for all students and subgroups and non-subgroups as well. As I alluded to before, the way that, you know, you and I learned when we were in school was very different from the way kids are learning today. And so it is very important that, you know, you are taking a look at the instructional practices and giving it professional development. So let's flip the page and we'll go on to next. And again, we can come back to what we were talking about before, but I kind of felt we got stuck spinning our wheels to a certain degree.
But that second one is the same kind of thing. We're already doing that, sit program and everything else, right?
Well, we really, the goals were new this year, so we really didn't have a chance to align them. They wrote their subplans over the summer, so they really didn't have a chance to do that alignment clearly with the board goals. They did include the curriculum alignment process changes, but, so that is something that we really want to do. We want to make sure that we have it connected, you know, from the board goals to the building goals and...
If you weren't aligned, what were you doing?
Well, we were aligned, but you developed new board goals. So we did look at student achievement.
See, I'm hung up on this, I'm sorry. I've been on that a long time. This is too lengthy for me. A lot of it is regurgitated stuff that's been going on, okay? That's what I feel about it. If you go to page six and seven, in my eyes, it finally says increased percentage of students by assessments by seven percent.
There you go.
Why seven percent? I don't know. Because last...
Yeah, what does that do for us? I got questions about it.
Last meeting I asked Alan about, we had building plans and they threw like five percent, eight percent increases. And you said you had to start someplace.
Well, some of them had larger increases before, so what the principals and I discussed was how to sustain it. So like if, say there was a ten percent increase from the previous year, then we didn't want to make another ten percent because we didn't know if we could sustain a twenty percent. So sometimes we did a five or sometimes a seven percent.
And next year might be three percent would be.
Right. Exactly. But we wanted something to aspire to though.
Where does that put us as far as our state rankings go? I don't know.
But anyway, six and seven to me finally has a target, a goal to achieve. And I understand where everything else cascades to pages six and seven.
Absolutely.
And I think we're spinning our wheels, okay, for almost forty-five minutes to get to the, to me, the goal.
And isn't it, did we say in the past session, the board shouldn't micromanage? How it happens, we just want to kind of see.
You want to ensure that it is happening.
Yeah.
So I mean, you know, again, I go back to that point earlier, you know, definitely I think, you know, if the board wants to see this trimmed down, you know, my feeling is, and I can chime in here, is that Bob would be willing to accommodate everything. That's why we're here right now.
Absolutely.
But there's a lot of work that needs to be performed. And so if you want to take it as, okay, we know those things are going on, we see those things going on, we don't have to focus strictly on the outcomes.
So the other two words John mentioned earlier were job description. I started to say something and some of these things, I believe, are part of job descriptions. Right or wrong? Some of these things that you're, that we are striving to achieve are part of your job description that you guys bound to have, and passes down to principals, and principal passes down to the teachers. And when you go to the fiscal things, I mean, you got maximize district resources and assets. I'm assuming Mary's doing that. I would believe that's, it's not written that way in her job description, that she is doing that and we know she's achieving those things. We know that Bob, through your, that with delegation down again through the ranks, we're achieving a number of other things. And that's what I'm looking at it, now we finally see a seven percent goal.
Yeah, when we, when we used to do this in the other world, the private sector, it was how much? Okay, how much? That's great, great, but how much yet? Show me, show me how much you're going to save. I don't care how you do it, how much? And you're going to be where in the market, what percentage of the market? Well, we're going to increase by seven percent. Well, where does that put you? We want to be in the top ten percent. Does that put you in the top ten percent? Well, no. Well, then you need to change that. You understand what I'm saying? So to me, you know, again, we have, we have, we have told our citizens and taxpayers that we're in the top two percent of the country. We need to be somewhere there in New York State. And so anything else, you know, associated with that goes along with it. And the same as far as dollars of savings go. Mary's doing all that great stuff and you had, I don't know, three hundred thousand dollars that you showed us during the budget process, right? Fantastic. What are you going to do this year? You know, that's the kind of thing that, I'm very along with Paul, you know?
Well, and maybe, because I also understand, there's a lot of work that goes behind it and you want to be able to demonstrate that this is everything that's going. So maybe a better way to present it is kind of, here's the bottom line goal and here's everything to go into it, if you wanted to still have it or everything was, you know, so then it's, instead of having to go through six pages to get to measurable goal, start with measurable goal and say, here's everything to go into it.
But also the committees, we know what's going on by the committee work.
Right, yeah, I mean, I don't...
Reports to committees, from Alan to curriculum, to finance, from Mary to us, I mean, we get a lot of this in committee work. So we, we follow.
We also have a tendency, and let's be honest with ourselves, to micromanage just a little bit, I think.
What am I saying about micromanaging right now?
No, I'm not, I'm saying that what you said, what you're starting, or maybe what John, was that there are certain things that we just know that are going on. And yet we have a tendency, I think, to question some of the things that we know that are going on all the time.
So I'm saying that in the committee report, in committee, committee meetings, that's where Mary or Alan or whoever reports to us and if you have a question at that point, three people on the committee usually ask, but when it comes back and you read the report, are there any questions? And I think at that point, if you have a question, that's additional micromanaging, asking questions or...
No, I just feel like we have a tendency to, instead of saying, we want you to get here, I don't really care, not that I don't really care, but you know what I'm trying to say, we're not so much interested in how you get here, we just want you to get here. I don't think that we walk that walk. I think we talk it, but I don't think we walk it. I think we're like, you said you were going to get there, but can you just ask, I just want to know how this thing here is...
You're right.
I mean, you do that. So I don't think we can talk out of both sides of the...
I don't know that it's specifically established, we want you to get here, other than what Ed's saying, we want to be in the top two percent. We want to show our constituency we're in the top two percent and I would call too that...
We always hear those rankings come out all the time.
Yeah, I mean, that's what people look at.
Those rankings are developed by independent sources and...
They're pretty accolades.
Right. But then, I'm a numbered person too, so...
Three, two, eight tests are a point in time, they're not necessarily...
I'm not saying that to be all and all that we have to get to, but I like to look at the end of the year, did we achieve our goals or didn't we achieve our goals?
Increase capacity and speed by twenty-five percent for the network. I mean, that's, you know, again, so it's not just all achievement, there's other actual...
There are some things in a social institution that aren't measurable, say it's going to go down by twenty-five percent or up by twenty-five percent, but there are certain people working towards a regulation, a mandate, or moving the organization forward, and there's different growth factors, whether it's the student that gets a sixty-seven, the student that gets a ninety-seven, or social emotional issues. So there's a lot of things that go on that need to be applied, which means what's going on from an action plan, moving the organization forward. Everything can't be decreased or increased by twenty-five percent.
No, right. It's not, it's not, that's not realistic, right?
Well, that's why it's not realistic, it's not how we operate as a social institution. Well, measure everything by percentages.
But I think John...
And it's a simple thing. I mean, developing a technology plan which involves a lot of research and development and best practices and strategies, there's a lot of effort that goes into some R and D behind it. There's more effort going on in organizations for that, Jen, picking up help, getting a contractor and asking them to replace lights and spend money and do something that costs about five percent. That might take ten minutes. Pull up our deed, we're done. We met, we met our goals.
But why do we do all that stuff?
We need to do that in our deed.
With IT, why do we do all this? Why do we do all this stuff with IT?
Why? Number one, it's mandated by New York State, a three-year technology plan.
All right, but what's the...
Number two, it's to gain efficiency so we can, so we can get Bosse's aid, okay?
That's great.
So that, that gets back towards the fiscal...
That's the Bosse's aid stuff, right?
...services and doing it, but you need to know what we're doing on those things.
Yeah, right.
If we don't do those things, it's not a simple phone call, go and order new technology, we didn't maximize resources.
Right.
We didn't go through the research and development, utilize best practices so that we can move students and our organization forward.
Exactly, and that's exactly right. But at the end of the day, that all rolls off to cost savings. I mean, no reason why, no reason why CJ's got a job is because it gives our students a chance to succeed in test scores or whatever measurements there are and saves us cash. That's why we listen, that's why we got it.
And we do those things independently, whether they're at committee meetings or CJ comes out and says that we're reutilizing employee staff based on savings. So we are doing those things, they're happening.
Right.
All part of the action. Again, I, trust me, it took us a lot of time because I tried, I put together a few papers.
Absolutely.
But again, it's comprehensive, it's reflective of, this is our opportunity to adapt. And we're certainly willing to, but there are a lot of activities that go on in a social institution that are on that, that we can't measure by percentages of increases of people.
And that's like, very much professional development, you know, you can't really measure how much professional development a teacher is about it, but you can determine how many professional development opportunities were offered throughout the year. You're talking about curriculum alignment. Can you really measure that? No, but you can look at, you know, the curriculum that individual teachers that work in the buildings, that they are producing to ensure that they are creating opportunities that teach the children skills and the knowledge that will allow them to excel. And so, you know, kind of similar lines of what Bob was saying here is that, you know, in an idealistic world, it'd be great to attach percentages to everything, but sometimes it's a matter of collecting the data first, which, you know, some of this is reflective in. And then the next piece of that, you can, you know, hopefully establish some sort of percentage for growth if you identify, for example, going back to the first one. First one, if you're looking at a specific subgroup that you know is struggling, you dive into that a little bit more, if you use the terminology, but you know, data mining, you look at the things that Beth was talking about, you know, from there you can begin to build strategies. And so, you know, one of the things, you know, that I'll say about this document is that, you know, when I first printed it off, I thought, you know, the printer was broken because it kept, you know, printing page after page. But this is a very comprehensive approach and I think that, you know, at the end of the day, we'd like to see it pared down because you believe a lot of these things are being undertaken, you know, automatically within the district anyway, and it shouldn't be reflected in this document. I'm sure Bob, if you're willing to accommodate that request.
It's just, when I saw it, you're absolutely, Bob, this is great stuff, but to me, it's, there's two buckets. There's cost efficiency and student achievement, not necessarily in that order, student achievement, cost efficiency and how you measure those two things. So teacher development, we don't do that just because, because it's a nice thing that we do that so that our students can excel and perform better. So that's all part of student achievement. Or it may be you're doing it because you want to add additional responsibilities to them and cost save by, you know, lower head, I don't, it's just, just an idea, so that's...
So let me, you know, kind of change direction. I'm assuming that, you know, all of us took a look at this and read through it, you know, prior to the debate's meeting. What in particular do you feel should not be in this document?
I think it all should be there, but with John's, but with John's, you know, idea of you should start with the goal and Paul too, with the goal, you know? And what is, how much are we going to save the taxpayer and how much are we going to increase student achievement?
Sometimes those numbers are hard to generate, specifically when you're talking about cost-saving factors. You never know with a given year, you know, what you're hoping against. You know, yes, you have reserve funds that are there for a purpose.
If you don't have a goal, you never get there.
Yeah, I mean, that's true. You know, but I mean, idealistically, it'd be great to say that, you know, every student in New Hartford on ELA is going to achieve a, you know, a ninety-five or a buck, but how realistic would that be?
It's not realistic.
It's not. And so, you know, really what I'm getting down to is that when you're fashioning and you're attaching numbers to things, you need to be cautious that they are attainable, that you can achieve it, not only that, but how are you going to reach that as well? And sometimes you just realistically can't attach, you know, a figure to it.
Right, I agree with that.
And I think that's why we struggle on some of these measure goals, that there is a number of text to it. There's a lot of...
But there's other data that can, you know, demonstrate that you are working towards...
Doing great in the region, six things. There's one. You know what I mean? How do we rank in the state, you know, versus our region stuff? How do we rank, you know, again, you know, we can complain about the state reports, but they rank schools by their proficiency level. If it's just as basic as that, you know, our proficiency level at miles is four-three percent in ELA. And to get to the top two percent, the top five percent, the top ten percent of the state, here's what we need to do to get there. And this is our goal. And so, you know, it doesn't have to be racket science.
Does that apply to recharge?
No.
All right, so are we kind of in agreement that we, you know, I realize that there's a lot of things in here. Is there anything that you feel that should be taken out because it's being done or do we feel the document as it sits would be good for at least, you know, this year until you revisit the goal-setting process again? And again, you know, since this is a new process being undertaken, you know, this is something that's going to go through refinement and I think that, you know, periodically...
All right, so going quickly, so on the first page, we had, we were okay with that, you know, trying to understand how we use baselines.
It was just as a goal.
You know, I mean, providing wide-ranging athletic and curricular rate, you know, like relevant data to improve instruction. I agree, they turn free interest.
Mary pointed out something I kind of picked up as well, you've got to be cautious not to call these goals. You know, this is just sort of, these are strategies that are working towards your overarching goal. I mean, your goal that you've established is a broad category of student achievement, your goal that you fashion for the district itself is New Hartford is committed to the success of all students by applying the traditional high-end standards and providing, and it goes on from there. That's the goal that you're working towards. So really what we're looking here-
It says SMART goal, doesn't it?
What's that?
Doesn't it say SMART goal on the bottom there?
Yeah, but this is the, this is the actual plan to reach towards those. He applied, Bob, the administrative staff, applied the SMART acronym to the action plan.
Okay, so what's the SMART goal? Where are they?
The SMART goal itself, they're up at the top.
Oh, that's, that's the district goals.
Well, I'm saying that instead of the SMART goal, this is the action-
That's the district goal number one, and then these are SMART goals.
He applied the SMART goal terminology, I should have been more specific.
Okay, so we don't have SMART goals in front of us.
These are both an action plan utilizing the SMART criteria to exemplify-
Sub-goal. It's, yeah, it's, it's action plans to get to a goal that's not evident, that's not laid out.
Your overarching goal is to ensure that everybody in, in New Hartford succeeds. You can create SMART goals.
We created our goals, boy, there are four of them.
Those are broad-based goal categories. Essentially what you're saying is that this is the direction, here's the overarching goal.
No, no, you've got action steps to meet a goal, and so we've got the action steps here, but then again, we're, we're not seeing any goal.
I do, I think, to Paul's point, it does, all these things sort of track down to when you finally get to the statements that have numbers in it. I think a part of it is the way, I think if it was drawn, like boxes with arrows that led down to that sentence on the bottom that had a number attached to it, I think it would be clearer. I think it's hard to track because we're looking at four different categories, but really, you can't just say student achievement is only fed by this, because we just described, for example, student achievement is also fed by technology, it's also fed by a strong physical link, it's also fed by an engaged community. So, you can have this goal, but it's, it's like a three-legged stool, you need all those legs to be functioning. So I think that part of it is, it's difficult to track in this document, especially because it is so long, what exactly we're getting to. I think to the point that Ed made earlier, or Paul, somebody, if we said, if the measurable, for example, on strategy four, because that's what I'm in front of, page seven, increased level of mastery on common core models for algebra one, is greater than eighty-five percent, by seven percent, was at the top of the page, and then we listed down all the different strategies that we would implement, certainly we would see overlap between, you might see the same thing three times across, you know, fiscal management, technology, all those different things leading up to that goal. It's just hard to track it, I think, in this document the way that Ed put it out.
That's exactly right. And some of the goals might not have a number to it. Some of the goals might be maintain traditional class sizes, and then underneath this, da-da-da-da-da. So, it doesn't always have to have a number, but it's kind of like, starting with the conclusion-
Well, sometimes the, the goal is yes or no, the, you know, the measurable is yes or no.
Do we want, does it make sense to go to page six and seven and just kind of see do we agree or disagree with these that actually we think might be kind of-
Yeah, and I think we, I mean, I think maybe, I think we want to get something written down, and I think next year, party on, like, reach, change how it's written, change what's done, maybe at some point, because, you know, we feel like, you know, when I feel comfortable that we'll, we have a, we have a budget process that is really working to maximize everything here, all the different things, we can point all the data, but maybe we don't need to write it down this year, you know, but I think, I think right now, it's important that it's comprehensive, and then I'd rather pull stuff out than be like, you know, I should write it down, but I, I, I think really, page six and seven is the top of it, and we're, you know, it's just a, maybe there's a better-
Except that it's not all of it, so if you look at page two, where does it fall in, okay, and where we are actually measuring this part of it, which is not academic, it's athletic and extracurricular, but still ties into student achievement, and we want ultimately to tie into performance review, when you review the athletic director or whatever, how do you know that he's done what he needs to have done to raise our, you know, what is it to take our athletic program to a higher level? What is it to take our extracurricular programs to a higher level? Is it to add more programs? Is it to get more kids involved in those programs? I mean, I see these numbers and these reports, but again, what is the goal? And I don't see that on six and seven to, how are we going to improve that and make those things better for our students? So that's not, there, there isn't anything measurable there particularly that I can see on six and seven.
Yeah, how do, how would, I mean, it's not win-losses, you don't want to do it that way.
No, but you could be, it could be ranking in the states, it could be participation across the programs, it could be number of students, you know, more students involved in the program.
But again, I need to be right here in terms of the cost.
No.
No, no. Well, and we do have measurements that measure the last-
You look at the numbers, you go, no, no, we don't want to do it, we don't want to use it. I mean, it's, it's an option, but, and maybe an option is schools that just does nothing but, you know, sports, you know.
This is in Alabama.
Right? Right, exactly.
You know, compared to FM that you brought out academically, why across the state are they always top, or even in our section, top in almost every sport, have more sports than we do, and they're top in the section in almost every sport? And why? And why can't we achieve that in, in that area? So, I mean, they might be looking at ranking, not necessarily win-loss, but how are they able to achieve that and-
But you know what, yeah, to your point, sorry, I should, but I think, I think what you just described in a certain of these is the risk of exclusively looking at, well, we need to be in the top two percent of the country, we need to be in the top two percent of the country, because really, maybe the best way to get to the top two percent of the country is really not bog ourselves down with sports, let's just eliminate all extracurricular activities and focus exclusively on spending those dollars on academic things. And, you know, personally, you know, I'm not aware, I'm not doing a multinational company, I'm a parent, like, I have three kids, they're all different, some of them achieve at one level, some of them achieve at another level. I don't, I don't look at my three kids and say, well, I like you to do not so much because you're not achieving. I think that achievement means different things for each child and-
Well, the more reason why you have that diversity among programs, in fact, even our, you know, students with disabilities or students that need extra things, some kids need sports, some kids need sports to get into college, some kids need music to get into college, some, you know, some kids need all of it, and having gone through the college application process, it's all of the above and then some, so-
And that's all reflected in our, in our goal.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, to answer your question, I don't think everything's listed on six and seven necessarily, if we want to be comprehensive about what we're listing as measure, our measurements or-
I'm just concerned about when we say achievement, that we remember that when we originally talked about it, it's a holistic statement, it's not, it's not just that kid needs to achieve, they're not in the top two percent, they're at the top, they're doing the best that they can, they're, achievement means something different.
For that student, and back to what he said, it's, it's different for every student.
Sometimes it's sixty-seven, sometimes it's ninety.
Young, they have, they have a young team, and maybe we call five hundred, this group.
One loss, one win would be good.
We're, we're social institutions, we're looking at growth and moving forward, I don't think all of it is much of that.
No, absolutely.
And so, it's hard to say we're going to be top two percent in athletics or-
Looking at improvement from one year to the next. So what is our baseline, just like with our academics, what is our baseline and what do we want to get to? If our athletic director is now saying, I want to make, you know, his goal is to make sports a little bit more powerful, what does that mean, you know, for him and, and what are those measurements? So at the end of the year, you could say, you did your job, or he could say, he did his job or didn't do his job.
The number of times the A V has to come before the board will decrease by ten percent.
Certainly, I mean, page, page six is, page six and seven is specific to common core, through, through it.
Right, yeah.
You know, just kind of jumping back in here, looking at page two, when you are talking about extracurriculars, specifically things like sports, that is tied into the goal in which you fashion, because you are taking a holistic approach for student success, and that's what's kind of pointed out, there are students who are going to excel in the field and the court compared to the classroom as well, and so essentially what, you know, my interpretation or publicist's laid out is that you want to take a look at, you know, utilizing the energy you have, you know, what types of opportunities are offered at the various levels, what are the participation rates at all, all of those levels, because you might find out that, you know, maybe you're carrying a sport that realistically is not, you know, pulling its weight, I'm going to use the word pulling its weight, but, you know, it's not drawing an interest, to give you an example, you know, my daughter's school, the high school level, they were thinking about, and they did, actually this year, they eliminated, unfortunately, their gymnastics group, you know, looking at the data, they just didn't have enough participation in it. Now, the one nice thing about-
We dropped, we dropped two programs last year, we dropped D J V, goes lacrosse, and we dropped modified, yeah, and we dropped modified, and we dropped modified-
That's my sport. Just teasing, I was just teasing, but yes, you know, and again, those are the things, and, you know, you might see that there's a surge in some people that are-
So what better way to gauge athletics than participation rates?
Exactly, so.
And then, I think you guys, we, we might offer sixty-five personal license forms upon seven hundred students, and so, is our way to provide opportunities for students, is our goal to be in the top five percent.
Correct.
If our goal's to be in the top five percent, maybe we should obviously decide to specialize in sports, and we should lessen them so we have some student athletes participating or maybe in the top five. So, these are all questions that you have to help us answer.
Sure.
Plus, if we're going to make it that, you know, that percentage or, or top percentage oriented, or we find opportunities for students.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I mean, anybody, Bob's going to want to go win-loss or anything like that, but participation rate, you know, we want a well-rounded holistic approach to our, to our students' education, and so participation rate based upon student population is probably a good way to do that.
Same way we do language classes, students participate in activities, so we do do that, but, um, independent on the population, the form, the top tier in one area, but maybe success that we make a success in another way, but I don't think we can extrapolate everything as being a top, right, and so-
Oh, but I think improvement from one year to the next, and how do we define that?
And that's why you need to have that data-
Right.
-to do that. And, and that data this year may not be in the top five percent, it may be something else, so you still have to-
Sure.
All right, so kind of moving, you know, the conversation forward, and I just kind of wanted to just pause for a second, because I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what we're looking at here, and make sure that we're all, because again, this is a process that's new, and it's going to go through refinement, and I think one of the things, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that what you would like to see probably in the future, if not even with this document, is a change in the format, is that correct? To have it a little bit more, okay, so that's something that can be easily done. The, the second point, I just want to make sure that if we, you know, if going to a new format, do you think it's also important to keep the things that are within this document? Maybe scale back the ones that, you know, in terms of the language that is being used, on the things that are being conducted within the district that are just kind of, as, as Paul kind of pointed out, maybe a job description compared to those that really are action-oriented that are moving forward? Is that, am I understanding you correctly?
I feel strongly, one way or the other, I mean, as, as long as it's, it's starting with the result-
Right.
-and how you got there.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, include the action items, that, that's nice, it's great information to have, but you'll, the SMART goal, and again, that's SMART goal, increased percentages to the score in the proficiency range in ELA and MAT, very straightforward, that's a SMART goal, okay? And then, how are you going to do it? It may include CJ, it may include the library, you know, wherever the case may be, those action steps you get there.
I think given changing the format, it'll make it easier to read, and so I like having this information here, just in a different form.
Okay, good, and I think that's important, and I'll get in the input, because we definitely want to create a document that's easy to read, first of all, but also reflects what the board would like to see done within the district as well, and that's really our ultimate goal here today. But the one thing that I think that, you know, a little bit that we're getting bogged down, and now that we got the formatting issue kind of swayed away, you know, in the future, is that, you know, just pausing for a moment, the action plan itself, and what is being proposed and the things that are being undertaken within the district, are these things that are reflected in this document, the things that the board wants to see being undertaken in the district? And the second piece of that, do you believe that it's going to lead towards better student achievement? Are those the-
Well, these are the things that we see, that we see, you know, ongoing all the time, and so we've obviously approved of them.
Absolutely, yes.
You know what I mean?
I'm talking about the document.
Right, yeah, now, now, whether or not, now whether or not, you know, it increases, you know, the, the SMART goal, it gets to the SMART goal or not, that's something that we can assess, all we can do is say, hey, it looks like you guys are doing some good stuff here, you know, and questioning that kind of thing, and, but whether they get, whether it gets us to that ultimate SMART goal or not, that's something different.
Okay, and I think ultimately, the important piece when looking at this action plan is that it is doing what it's designed to do, and that is to reach towards the students of New Hartford and make those improvements and increase student achievement. At the end of the day, that's really the important piece, because we can fix the editing, we can, you know, definitely fix the presentation of it, but I want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with the content, because that's what we need.
Again, the only thing that I would recommend is, and just like everybody's going to talk about, is, you know, yeah, the, the content's great, but there's a lot of stuff missing.
Sure, yes, yes, absolutely.
The SMART goals are missing, you know, I mean, you know.
And we can definitely, that's something that can definitely be generated, to have it be more in tune of what you're looking for, to say, okay, here is the SMART goal itself, and that's something that can definitely be added into the document, not this year, no, definitely next year, and I think, you know, after this year, once you're adding that data, you know, you can definitely start becoming more specific in the action plan itself, and, you know, having that, you know, reflected in this. All right, so how moving forward, I, you know, I want to make sure that we get through the documents, with the type of fashion here, is that, we looked at page number six, we're looking at increasing, it's high seven percent, how are we going to do this? Again, we're going back to that data piece, where we want to understand various groups within the district in order to understand them better and to better meet their needs, maybe the baseline from thirteen, fourteen school year, and that's going to be sort of the point that we're going to measure so far, from year on out, when can, you know, we'll see this happens from, from 2015. Second part of this is improve instructional services to students with disabilities in response to the changes with the district's reform, we want to narrow that achievement gap, implementation of local assessment, plan the lab and the school improvement plans, and again, how are we going to achieve this, how is it attainable, you're going to have those meetings at the building levels for those various teams, the director of student services, superintendent, and again, here is where we're going to be in line with the data points, and, you know, coming up with those strategies, and again, these are things that you're going to want to be recorded on.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what was the thinking behind putting percentages for some, but not others? So for, for narrowing the achievement gap, is there, what was the hesitancy to-
Because that's determined by the state, we don't yet know that, they look at your achievement on the end of the year assessments, for the second, second bullet here, like, that, because this specifically is addressing a concern at our junior high school, because we were identified, our subgroup was identified, our students with disabilities, because of the gap, and that's when we presented the local assistance plan.
So you don't have the number?
No, we don't know that until the end, the students take the test, and then they figure out based on all of the performance of the students who took the test.
Don't you have a, there was a number gap from last year, right?
Right, but that may not be the same, it's, it's a number though, based on the 2014 assessment, so that they will reexamine that, not based on 2014, but they'll look at the students who take the test in the spring here, in 2015.
Is it the same cohort, or they're following now separate cohort?
Different kids, no, it is different kids, so, right.
But so, and that's why sometimes it's marked, but, but isn't it, I mean, it's always different kids we're measuring year to year, third grade, hopefully they're not the same kids taking the third grade test every year. But I'm just, I'm not, you had a, a, an achievement gap of X-
Right.
-and next year, you're going to have an achievement gap, a gap of Y.
Right.
And we don't know what Y is yet, but do we not feel comfortable saying we want it to be less than X?
Well, that's why with the first one, we want to increase our overall performance by seven percent.
So that would slow down-
Yes, hopefully that would-
That would change the gap, too.
That would, would change our gap, and that's why we specifically said it would be with students included, including students-
Could make the gap worse.
No, it can make the gap, so the gap could stay exactly the same, even though everybody's improved and performance improved, because you're changing both ends of the gap.
Can we still measure, I think this is great, I think, and we'll talk about the seven percent, but, but can we measure every one of our groups and subgroups versus the state where we rank?
We can, right? It's all, the data's right there.
Yeah, we can look at, at that.
So, I mean, so why would we want to be any less proficient compared apples to apples in any subgroup versus our overall population? I don't think we would, we want, you know, we, we want our students with disabilities to be be forming at the same high level of standard as our general population-
Oh, certainly, we want, and that's why we said, again, all subgroups, we want to see growth in all subgroups, absolutely, we want our students with disabilities, we want our limited English proficient, all students we want achieving at proficient levels.
I mean, and I'd rather see growth of New Hartford versus Hartford rather than holding that, you know, because for all I know, at school X, their special education program imploded, their best teacher quit, and so they had a bad year, oh, New Hartford did better, when absolutely nothing could have changed in New Hartford, it's just our ranking improved because somebody else ranked it better.
We, we got to get a handle on that, because, you know, right now, anybody moving into the area is looking at those numbers, and they're saying that they don't have to pay as much in Westboro to get their kids into the Hartsoy Elementary, you know, and, and if I was a family doing that, I, I'd look at them.
But I think, but I think for our purposes, I think we really just need, in my opinion, But I think, but I think for our purposes, I think we really just need, in my opinion, have to look at improvement over our last year's numbers. That has to be the goal, as opposed to going from where we are to something against the state. I think it has to be we're improving on last year's numbers by, like you're saying, seven percent from our last year.
But what if that performance keeps us in a very low ranking?
But it has to be realistic for us.
Well, what's realistic is, is what we've told our community. That's realistic. This should be a no-brainer for us, because we are top two percent of the nation. So, so we've, we've, we have, in all the, the information that we have given to the community, we are the best. And so, it shouldn't be a problem for us to be the best. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be behind Westboro, Westmoreland.
So essentially, everything you're saying, and John Griffin from Long, is that you're looking for some type of number attached to this?
Well, I just, I just wanted to know and understand why there was a number attached to some and not others, and that that was my, and I'm still not quite.
Well, basically, John, that would be to increase, increase the results of our students with disabilities. And certainly, I can work on attaching a number to that with ATRF if it's possible to do that.
Because honestly, if, if we showed it, in my mind, if we showed improvement, we could show improvement in all subgroups and still have the achievement gap.
Correct.
It's possible.
Okay.
And, and so, it could be a success, but still, there's this, you could still be...
Right, and that's, and that's my point with, numbers can tell different stories depending on the story you want to tell.
That's why I mentioned, there is. So John, you know, I made the disclaimer that I don't understand this. Essentially, what you're saying is that you would like Alan to, you know, generate, essentially, in terms of, to create a standard and to impose it on yourselves, correct, in order to create a measurement?
Well, if, if we're looking for improvement of the subgroups, if we're looking for improvement of, of the regular population, we should look for the improvement with the subgroups as well.
Which is what he said with the seven percent.
Yes, because, because the state measures that. You know, the, the state wants us to know that it's not just the performance of your overall school, but that these subgroups, that you're not successful. If your numbers are great, but the subgroups are not performing.
So are you saying that, Alan, that the seven percent, according to this, all subgroups will increase by seven percent?
No, we were saying overall, we would increase, but keep in mind, we're analyzing all of that data with those subgroups.
So the overall is inclusive of the subgroups, not...
Yes, yes.
Do we want to see, and try to measure, and again, it's hard because it's such small cohorts, but I still think...
What is the cohort size in parent group?
Uh, cohort size and parent.
It's like eighty, ninety?
Yeah, the cohort, it's, it's thirty, thirty-one, I believe that is.
Yeah.
As parent, yeah.
Yeah, as parent.
But do we still want to be provided that information, or is that like romantic? I don't know the answer to that I'm asking, because we're saying overall, inclusive of everybody, increase by seven percent. Doesn't make sense to say, and each subgroup, or, and it seems a little much to go each subgroup, but then, who are we to pick and choose which subgroups to measure?
I think, doesn't the state take into consideration overall? Doesn't the state put them in?
Yes, it does everything.
They do an all-student category.
And, and do. And then they do a separate.
Yes.
So that's, I think, we do.
Right.
So, let me ask the question this way, Alan. Why does the state choose to use the terminology of achievement gap versus proficiency, or versus, there's got to be, I mean, they don't just say, because, and I mean, you know, so much of what we've heard in terms of feedback from the teachers over the past year, specifically with regard to special education students and students with disability, is that, and this is my concern about this particular bullet point, is that the state assessment, the accommodations that are allowed, do not take into consideration what these kids are capable of, what their specific needs are. It's not very individualized, and it's not, in some cases that occurred from the teachers, that it's just not fair to that population of students.
Right, right.
Are we doing a disservice by saying, well, we, are we just jumping on that bad wagon by going, we don't care, we just want to see state numbers?
Right, but I think it's also important to point out here that when a student takes, I'll use fifth grade for an example, when a student takes a fifth grade ELA or math test, it's a fifth grade level. And our students with disabilities, it's important to point out, not all of our students with disabilities are on grade level. That's why they've been identified as a, a student with a disability. So I think that that's also important to point out, that that's a non-grade level, independent, I can ask that they're doing, and many times, they're not at that grade level.
But they may have grown, they may be a fifth grade age student, getting a fifth grade age assessment, but they may have shown growth from a second grade level, or a third grade level, or...
Yes.
And I guess that's...
But they may still have scored two on the state assessment.
And I guess that's my concern, like we were talking about the lag in data and the fact that we're looking at a teeny tiny cohort, and then we're looking at a separate teeny tiny cohort. And what does that really say about success of our school district? If I, I mean, if I evaluate the success of, my success as a parent, based on my kid's academical, academical scorecards, in two cases, I'm doing awesome, and in one, not so much. Like, does it make more sense for us to follow a cohort if we're going to be evaluating our performance, our special education performance? Does it make sense to say, okay, kid A did this last year, and this kid got from point A to point B. That cohort moved, that cohort made progress, we adjusted, we addressed some of those needs, and we kept moving forward.
More accurate.
I think it's, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying that, to Bob's point, kids are not widgets, they are kids. And, and sometimes there are things that, no matter what, to just say the district is successful or not successful, because a child who's tested, to Alan's point, at a fifth grade level, who's working at a second grade level, well, that kid failed that test, that kid's a failure. You know what? That kid worked his butt off.
He's in second grade, not in the second grade, but he might be two to three years.
Mine.
Right, but he's taking the second grade assessment.
No, if the kid's in fifth grade and they're working at a second grade level, they're taking a fifth grade state test.
Really?
Yep, with no accommodations, with no accommodations.
So a student has a test written normally for, for an assessment, where they come to take the state assessment, and they're not allowed to have a test written to them. So essentially, the way that I'm kind of reading into this, I'm going to kind of interject you, that you're bringing up very valid points, is that, you know, really at the end of the year, you're going to know sort of that gap, or that's, you know, for that subgroup. If you refer to that along, and attainable, part of what they're proposing to do is that really looking at the data and knowing full well that a student does not get those accommodations, that's going to change the practice of the action plan. Let's start teaching them skills in order for them to be able to take, maybe at a, at a higher level, I guess, if you want to call it that, but to better be able to manage those tests than they could with those.
I don't want to teach to the test, I want to teach.
But that's what I was just going to say, and then my point is just that, is that go to our upper level goal.
It's not necessarily teaching towards the test, you're teaching independence, because in the sense of...
Yeah, but there's a lot of ways to measure success. There is.
There's a couple of parents that come back and coach me during the holidays and tell how well I did before in college, and they stress that to the board as much.
Without question.
So there are different ways to measure the gap, the number of, according to the whole.
Well, I understand, I come back to that, though, but, but again, the state reform agenda is specifically set to analyze data, and there's been a reluctance to analyze data, because it's obviously an initiative. It's an initiative, because there's all these things. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, what is spit out on that public information site, like it or not, review it, say that's not good, it doesn't matter? That's what it is. They are ranking us versus our local schools and our peer groups on those numbers.
But is that the most important thing?
And our rankings are by multiple businesses.
It is, if you want to keep property values up.
Oh, who else to point?
Those are independent rating, rating agencies that are measuring our goal.
Well, no, but they don't give us any money.
Do we ever, do we follow the cohorts?
Yeah, we can follow.
You can, but do you?
Yes, definitely, yeah.
So, so I mean, there is the data to say, okay, this group of third graders and fourth grade, they did better, or fifth grade, they did worse.
And I do think it's important to point out here, you know, in the fall, I presented our three through eight ELA and math results, as well as our regions and our AP results. And I do think across the board, you know, there's always areas to improve, and do we want these test scores better? Absolutely, three through eight. But I do think our results tell a story about the success in our district. And certainly, you know, we will continue to focus on that. We'll look at all of those subgroups. But it's also important to say that with those subgroups, students with disabilities, for example, across the state, you know, districts are struggling with this, and what do we do for these students, and how do we help these students? And, you know, there are many, many things that are in place, and we will continue to be reflective about that. But know that it's not just a New Hartford area of concern, it really is across the state. And again, Jamie, I'm sure you can speak to that.
Everybody's in the same boat.
Everybody's in the same boat.
Some predicament to be in.
So everybody's in the same boat. So again, you know, why, you know, I don't, again, I don't understand, when you look at the rankings, it's just proficiency levels. And I don't, I don't see what the reluctance is, you know, to measure ourselves against the rest of the schools in the state. It's all there, it's the same stuff. And the higher you go up, you know, in the general three through eight numbers, percentage is this. Now, all of the little subgroups and stuff fall out, you know what I mean? So if we're not, I guess the question is, where do we want to be? We, we haven't set that, that , where do you want to be ranked in the state? Where do you want to be? I know where I want to be. And I know we've, we, you know, thirty years, I, I kept tabs on, on New Hartford going, hey man, we're top two percent of the country. And so...
I think what you're speaking to, in terms of the ranking, this document and the action plan that we're kind of going through, and it has minor tweaks here and there, really what we're talking about is identifying students, so far, in a lot of this, who are the individuals that need that extra assistance. Let's provide them with that extra assistance by looking at the data to determine what is the best methodology to increase performance. By increasing performance, you are going to see the school district's performance at a higher level, which should translate over, you know, hopefully to rankings. And so when you are looking at this, it's a very systemic approach, where you're identifying individuals, creating the help. And again, since this is sort of kind of the first year that you're taking this in a certain direction, again, you know, if you want to impose a gap elimination, you know, sort of standard upon yourselves, you know, and I think that's what you were talking about, John, maybe I kind of interpreted you wrong there, that, you know, that's all well and good. You know, but essentially, what you're looking at here is you have a subgroup that you know struggles, and you know the challenges that they're up against. Let's now sit down using the data that we collected in order to create action plans. And so that's encapsulated underneath the attainable and achievable piece down below there, because that's something you're going to want to come back maybe towards the end of the school year. Have you sat down to identify strategies, you know, to help these individuals? That's the work of the board, to say, okay, what is, you know, what's being undertaken? And if it's, you know, obviously a new program, it's going to cost money, that's going to come before you, and that's really a decision that, you know, you as the collective board is going to have to make. And it's documented, the goal is in fashion, make that a little bit easier, because you've committed yourself to increasing achievement for all students, not just the top, but everybody throughout the district. And so really, what we're looking at here is you're breaking it down to find those individuals who are in the most need of assistance, and then finding ways to improve that. And so I think towards the end of the year, Alan, we would be more than happy to share, you know, that gap adjustment with you, once you see the pieces of that information, because then that sets up, and that's where the annual yearly performance that the state requires you to either need or exceed, and then lucky you next year, if you see, you know, probably make it higher for you, which makes it a little bit more challenging, but, you know, that's the direction, and that's what the state does. So...
Yes, that's the accountability status that comes out in August.
The other thing I'd like to see is, with this document, we talked about changing the format from like goal to action plan. One thing we did in the private industry, too, is say, who owns this goal? And that's not in here. Like, who, that's, you know, Alan's going to own this, and he's kind of in charge, and Mary's going to own this, CJ's owning the technology. I mean, I, I guess I'd like to see a name associated with it. I mean, and who's, yeah, responsibility.
And it could also be, you know, building level as well, if you're talking about the third level. I think that's something that Bob could probably work into the document, correct?
And then, one, even from a training tool, like, that's why I like this document, being new, newest one here, is just to see what has been happening, and that was my question, looking, is this all new stuff, or is what you've already been doing? So it's kind of a good tool to see. And then it's, because it's a job description, whose job description is it? So that would be helpful, too, just to add a, you know...
You know, and I think, to follow along on that, it's a great piece to really, you know, create that transparency with the community itself, and really let them know what is happening within the district, what efforts are being undertaken, because then you are, you know, talking about accountability. And so, if, you know, the rankings come out, the state reports come out, and the community isn't happy, you know, it's a document, you come to the board and you say, well, you know, X, Y, and Z was supposed to take place, you know, what's the deal? That's the other piece of it, too, is the board, you know, monitoring the progression, how well the students are performing, how well this action plan is, you know, put in place, and, you know, diverting resources that are necessary to bring this document to life and have these goals materialize. All right, so if we move forward here, because we kind of, you know, we get caught every now and then spinning our wheels, I think they're great conversations and it's great input for how we can improve this document, and really create something that the board is happy and looking for. So if you go to the next one, strategy four, efficiently use comprehensive data and research-based strategies to enhance instruction and increase student achievement. And again, you're looking at the desired result, the data line, implement New York State learning standards and modules to inspire students to make their potential. How is it specific adaptive, implement Common Core modules for Algebra I? So we're getting very specific in terms of what we're looking at here. What is our measurable, what we'd like to see happen? Increased level of mastery, mastery, greater than eighty-five percent by seven percent. So again, you have your specific there. You know, how are we going to do this? Analyze benchmark assessments every ten weeks to inform instruction. So again, you're looking at how well this is working, you're analyzing the data, and kind of changing, if you're using those leading indicators to help change the instructional methods. Create action plans to align instruction with adapted modules. And again, you know, that's something the board can come back, you know, a few months down the line, and say, where are we on this? How well are we progressing? Are there some, you know, are there documents that we can share with the board, so we can actually see this unfold?
And, you know, so when we do come back, my question's going to be, why seven percent? You know, for both of those, why seven percent? And if we did increase it by seven percent, what's our ranking?
See, to me, the ranking is irrelevant for this reason, okay? Let's say that in order to get to the two percent threshold, that, that where, say, we say we are, it would require a fifteen percent increase. And that's not, and that's not realistic or attainable, but seven percent is the maximum realistic attainable percentage? Well, then I think seven percent is the right number. You can't put down a number that's, we know, is attainable, because we're trying to achieve.
I agree with that.
But why can't we do both?
But that was my question. My questions, my questions were, why seven percent? And if we did get it, where are we going to rank it?
And why can't we do both? And here, do your, I mean, maybe seven percent increase, if that's the number, doesn't get us to two percent in the state, but across two or three years, it might, you know, maybe that's a weakness for us, and it won't get us to that. Seven percent of people will want this year.
You won't know, because how much is everybody else increasing? You won't know your ranking and still...
But you can use the current data, and you can hypothesize.
And that's sort of data in like a vacuum. Like, what do we rank in expenditure per pupil? We want to be the top two percent of that, because maybe that's, maybe FM's expenditure one percent.
But I think, I think we can, we can have that percentage overall, but I think the more useful percentage would be our internal, how much we increase, because again, how much is everybody else increasing?
I got you.
And Alan, the other thing is, why just Algebra I? What was the...
Because that was our first. We're looking now to the implementation of the regions reform agenda in our secondary school, for that. So there's only been one year of the Algebra I, Common Core test. And you'll see incorporated into these goals as we go throughout the years, as we implement the regions reform agenda, and students start to take the Common Course Testments, we'll certainly put them in, you know, for the other areas as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Thank you.
Moving forward, I think when we provide it updated at the end of the year, and rarely put in additional information, it may make it more, maybe friendly. And then when we go through a full year cycle next year, we adopt the goals, and we go through those portals, and certainly, we go through, and this is part of it as well. And then we also need this, yeah, to meet with the initiatives, which we need for a couple days in the summer, and strategic planning session, we miss that opportunity here with them. So the format can improve going forward. And I think when you see exit results, when this is updated, it will give a little more sense as well.
Excellent. All right. Fiscal responsibility, and again, this was a point that I think that, you know, I know most visibly about this one, the stuff that's being undertaken. Again, we can look at formatting issue to determine whether or not this can be scaled back, could be a little bit more pressure, considering the length of the document. But again, the strategy that we're really looking to implement is to develop a budget that aligns expenditures and revenues, just strategic planning encompassing current and future economic indicators. And again, that's going to vary year by year, and again, you're going to run into things throughout the course of the year that you can anticipate. So the desired result, adopt a budget that provides for the students' needs, our students enhances instructional initiatives, and maintains fiscal responsibility. And specifically, we can accomplish, maintain programs, traditional class sizes, and provide for new initiatives. Measurable, we got class size reports, all programs remain intact for twenty fifteen, sixteen, and new initiatives implemented. Tenable and achievable, you have here implemented. Tenable and achievable, you have here implemented budget calendar, you know, less if you have your internal and external leading economic indicators. So, you know, that's data that's going to be presented to the board, that's going to give you an indication of, you know, forecasting it in the future, of whether or not you can meet that goal, or, you know, something catastrophic would happen, you know, scale back. I don't think that's going to happen anytime in the near future, at least I can attest to. Question about this one more?
I was going to say, or at least again.
Again, I know. Question about this one, are we comfortable with that?
Comfortable, but again, the smart goal would be, how much? And we can set, we can set baselines based upon our efficiencies last year, and it may be the fact that you got the low hanging fruit last year, man, or the year before, and we're not going to be able to meet that, but we're going to commit to this. Yeah? Same thing with the revenue increase. Here's what we, here's what we're going to commit to.
Well, you know, the other.
The programs are on, but.
Well.
Yeah, that's what it is, that's why it's worded this way, to support all of that. But, you know, at the same time, maybe if you wanted to achieve a two percent, top two percent, then maybe we do have that same tax gap, and maybe we have to exceed this and that. So we're trying to do, you know, stay with it, and our goal is to stay within the tax levy limit, maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe not, so that's what spelled out, but that's a percentage.
We've got to be real careful.
That's measurable.
You've got to be real careful, because the Hartford residents believe that that's where they're at now regarding academics in the top two percent.
Well, what I'm saying is, for measurable.
And I know you believe, everybody thinks the top two, I don't know where you're.
Where do you think we are?
I don't know.
Oh.
But I don't know, you keep saying we're in the top two percent, I don't know who's saying that.
It's on the website. It's on our website, Buffalo and Newsweek, and it's right there, we're the top two percent of the country, and we pencil somebody.
But, but so again, as I demonstrated with numbers, so Buffalo Business Journal looked at some numbers, and picked out a percentage, and came up with this statement. And I'm betting you or I could look at the numbers that they have, and come up with a different percentage.
That's, we communicated to the community, John. What do you think our community, what's the expectation of our community regarding our state rankings?
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
No, I don't know, I don't, I've never heard anybody come up to me and say the things that they're saying to you, I'm just being honest. And so I would love to be in the top two percent, but to say that if we're in the top five percent, somehow we're a failure, and we're misleading the public, I just don't, I don't see that.
And I think, I think also, I don't think you set the district's agenda based on what business we produce, we.
But we did that. We did do that.
No, no, we said this is an accolade that we got.
No, it's not, we put it out there, the top two percent of the country, and that's okay, if that's what it said, but we have predisposed our community to pay these taxes because we are this good in our rankings. We've done that.
But, but you know as well as I do that there are different data sources, and different numbers that can be pulled, and so if.
We don't show those numbers.
But, but, nor did we say that based on SED report cards, we're the top two percent. We said, based on, I'm assuming, based on what the Buffalo Business Journal said, we're in the top two percent.
Hartford ranked.
Yeah.
By Buffalo Business Journal. But what does that do to the community, John?
But what I'm saying is, numbers are, and you know as well as I, numbers are funny, and so just because Buffalo Business Journal gave us an award, and we publicize it, doesn't mean that under any analysis of the numbers, that Buffalo Business Journal's number is correct.
Okay, I mean, again.
Or wrong.
That's right. I agree, but I'll tell you, if we're not driving that excellence based upon rankings, we've got a real problem.
And I don't think anybody on the board and administration is saying, we don't want to drive toward excellence. I just, I just continue to agree to say, we keep telling everybody we're in the top two percent, and I'm, I'm not going around saying, we're in the top two percent.
We are, because, because your face like mine is out there on that website, and that's right there. The, the numbers we give the, the public are based on that, and we're in the top two percent. We've been doing that for years.
According to.
Right or wrong?
But, but if, if you read it, I'm assuming it says according to.
Okay, that, it's the only measurement we've given this community, John. That's the only measurement we've ever given them, so what are they supposed to think?
We report out our, our U's performance, our A's performance, all the time.
Okay, all right.
I just.
All right.
So I think everybody has an important piece to the puzzle, and I do understand your concern about the rankings, because, you know, so many externally worth of looking considering Hartford as a place to establish their residence, they're going to look at things like the state. So, you know, I definitely understand where you're coming from, and I definitely understand where you're coming from as well. And I just kind of wanted to point out that one of our overarching goals that we fashioned was to maintain that high level of that academic excellence. And so really what you're looking at through here, and I'm just going to kind of reiterate what I've already spoken to, is that this is designed and focused on the kids, and what's truly important for them, and how are we best going to assist them to reach their full potential, and allow them to excel and succeed. And so we're looking at things like fiscal responsibility, you're talking about maintaining those programs that you have, keeping those class sizes, because that is in tune with the goal that you've set, because that's the tradition that you have in your Hartford. That formula has translated into high performance and high rankings. And so really what you're looking at here is an action plan, not only to maintain that, but to also hopefully increase the overall student performance as well. And so I think that we're all adding a little, you know, a piece of the puzzle, but we're not looking at the big picture, because we're all building the same puzzle, and we're all working towards that same goal. And so I think that, you know, we keep diverting when we're looking at a specific line in here, or a specific, you know, action plan, and then trying to break it apart a little bit, and really kind of going back to what I said before, if you look at the big picture of what this is attempting to accomplish, it speaks in tune with what every single one of you desires for this district. And so essentially what we have here is an action plan, a lot of it is already being undertaken, but again, the goal that you have, and I definitely understand it, wanting to attach some type of percentage to it, but I think Mary kind of nicely put it out there, really ultimately, what is our goal for the next academic year? And that's to keep program, that's to keep staffing where it is, that's to keep class levels where they are, and hopefully have more monies, you know, within the district to have those initiatives unfold that will benefit the overall student population. So really, you know, I think Mary could attach a percentage, but whether or not that percentage will be valid, I can't, if you know, say for certain. So if we go down to the next one, again, we have adopted budget.
There's a lot of unanswered questions right now, we don't know.
Exactly.
We don't know the legislative budget's going to adapt for students, we can't answer those questions, but at the end of the year, I think we can answer these questions.
Absolutely, and again, I think Bob kind of pointed that out, is that as you progress and you're getting reports, and then towards the end of the year, when you're getting more information, a lot of this is going to become a little bit more gelled, and I think makes a little bit more sense, and then again, it's going to go through the refinement process, and, you know, this document as essence will change.
Well, you know, and just a couple other things, the only other way you could try to attach some aspirational goal with finances would be to attach several assumptions that go along with that. And, you know, so I don't know whether or not it's useful to have a goal with assumptions. I mean, knowing full well, the board is aware of these assumptions, and we know it's not Mary's fault, if all of a sudden, gap elimination adjustment, they take another three hundred thousand away from us, that's, that's not her fault.
Right.
And so just because there is a, at least in my view, just because there is a number that's attached, if we don't meet it, and it's not our fault, I wouldn't hold it against the administration and say, you were a failure, I'd say, oh, we didn't meet it because of this reason.
Yeah, I mean, for example, you wouldn't, I wouldn't have developed a plan, you know, based on the barrel oil being nine bucks. You know what I mean? I mean, so, 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 for example, you used to, how much, how soon, and how sure? You know, how sure are you that this could happen, and what were the risk factors associated?
So can we go to the next page?
So, we definitely can.
That's the total.
Yes, absolutely. So if you skip to the next page, page eight, or we're looking at nine.
Page nine.
So you're looking at tax increase at or below New York State property tax levy limit.
Which we don't know what that is yet. We don't know. So there's a measure of all, and you can give you that result. And if that number is a number that will not allow you to achieve pages one through eight, then you'll know about that in time, because of all the attainable, achievable meetings, and all the reports that it provides you, so you can make a determination of, is this what your goal is, or is that not what your goal is? Your goal really is student achievement piece, we're trying to add a good value to the taxpayers. The good value would be the state of the limit, you hope, if that's a decrease, or a number that's not realistic, that's when the discussion happens, whether you achieve pages one through eight, maybe the number changes. So that's why there isn't a specific number or a specific percentage applied, but because we don't know what that is, and I, I wouldn't even.
Regarding the tax increase.
So for, for tax, or in or budget increase, because it's one of the same, essentially, if what it comes to.
Well, but putting, you know, they always get confused with, with, you know, but so the, the real dollars that the district spent last year was forty-seven million, something, that is what it was. People say, you know, we expect to spend X percentage more than that, regardless of what tax, because let's say the tax levy limit was three percent, does that mean you want to increase it by three percent? I would think if we could increase it by two percent, instead of three percent, we could do that. So is there a, a goal that you have to say, you know, based on all these assumptions, in a perfect world, I think next year's budget needs to be forty-seven million, you know, plus an additional one point two million?
When we go through the whole budgeting process? Yes, I don't want to throw out a number in the whole setting session and say, mm, a lot in my dark. I think it should, I think it should go up three percent, or without, that's what that whole year-long budgeting process is, and all of the different constituents stepping curriculum and what their requests are, I don't know what those are yet.
I don't think.
So for me to tell you last July, I would, I think the increase is going to be, it's pretty much.
I would say build up to three percent, but I don't think that's fair to the organization itself.
It isn't useful.
Number one. Well, number one, people are putting that out of their budgets, so we've never been told the staff, we're limited to X, Y, or Z, trying to build a budget based on what we need to drop there, and then tear off to it. Number two, I don't know how Smart Goal, the Smart Goal is going to come in, is that going to be part of our budget process? Smart Goal, that was included by a proposition, or we can implement this technology, is going to provide two million dollars to us over a couple of years. And so if we decide to spend that million dollars and provide that goal for a general fund, should we go up four or five percent? So that's another thing we have to go with. I don't know what our retirements are going to be, because at the end of January, I'm going to retire my own stuff. So that plays into it. I don't know what new initiatives are going to come out, I don't know what new requirements and mandates are going to come out of that. There's a host of things, these are all things we need to analyze, and, and, and they go into the budgetary process. Now how will we measure success for the budgetary process? And again, it changes, right now we've lost eight point two million dollars in gap elimination adjustments over the last five years, class sizes, traditional class sizes, keeping programs in place, and implementing new initiatives on the outside. That's been, that's been success for us. Will it change? It depends on the, 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 the.
I think, I think the goal is very simple, it's the vote. It's the vote, and it really says, and ensure strong community support of our schools, it's the vote.
But it's doing those things that you have.
Exactly, bring that, bring that there, but the measurement, at this point, isn't a percentage, it's the vote.
I wonder if I would see that we're doing those things.
It's the vote. Yeah, exactly, but it's the vote. I mean, if the, if the, if the community thinks it's responsible, it's responsible.
Exactly. And sometimes there's something that can happen else, like an external factor, like the assessment.
And they'll vote with their.
Whether or not that's, whether or not that is a true assessment of what the school budgeting process was, or people upset about what they're doing with assessments. So again, there's a host of factors at the moment, this is a test, I think we see it at the end of the year, the updates. And it could change, I don't know how the Smart Goals will, maybe create a cost that will be, our budget increase, and we'll have to explain, we had to do that with our capital improvement project, our budget went up ten percent, but our tax rate went up zero percent. So I don't want to limit Mary or the organization to a percentage at this point.
I, I don't, I can't agree more, I mean, that's fantastic. But again, again, the vote, that, that shows either strong community support, or it passed by one vote.
That's the goal.
You know?
We've had seventy-five, eighty percent since I've been here, passed it up.
There you have it. What was it last year, and what are we going to have this year?
Let me ask this question, because given what you said, and then this whole process, in the future, I mean, this is first time we're doing this really as a whole, the timing of this, just like we do with the budget process, the timing of our goal setting process should be, like, we should have this all set in July.
We go through an update, I know we have all the goals in June, and then we're simply.
And that's what we get.
So we're a little bit behind right now.
Just so you understand that, because we don't have.
The administrators have not continually, this one we're off, we have two days strategic training session, and we're going to put the administrators.
So in the future, we do all this and set these in July, so we know what our full caliber year is going to be.
One of the things we've identified that was positive, is recent training, which is what's in our, um, Smart Goals. And that's one of the things that I want to.
And another piece too, before we jump onto the next one, is kind of one of the elements out there, really the responsibility of the board in this whole process is to monitor periodically how these goals are progressing, and so going to this example where you don't necessarily see a percentage, you know, tied to anything, that's really the question, is that you want to be periodically asking Mary, how are we looking towards next year's budget? And, you know, have you done any type of forecasting? Do you anticipate increased revenues? These are the things that, you know, typically the board should be asking to make this objective a little bit more clearer to you, and then through the budgeting process, obviously you're going to be inundated with a lot of information, a lot of data, to kind of give you a better picture of how this is all going to materialize. And so when you are sitting there, and you are formulating that budget, you want to keep this goal in mind, that really your overarching goal is to maintain program, to increase student achievement with a minimal impact on the tax tag. And that's really the goal that you're striving for. And, you know, I understand you, you know, you want to attaching, you know, percentage so you can measure, you know, the one thing that I, you know, urge you to do is, you know, kind of got to back away from that mindset, just understand that some of these things, you just have the problem, you really can't attach a figure in a logic, rather than things that materialize. And so if you do have a goal where you want to stay, you know, of, beneath that two percent cap, then that's reflected in the work that you do through the budgeting process to ensure that you meet that goal. And so if you do present a budget to the public that you are under that tax tag, have you met that goal? Absolutely you have. I would say you have, as long as you've done X, Y, and Z, maintaining the programs, et cetera, et cetera, and that all materializes, and it gets clearer as you work through this. So, everybody comfortable on that one?
Good.
Okay, fiscal responsibility, again, we're going to develop a budget process that aligns expenditures and revenues to strategic planning encompassing current and future economic indicators. Did I?
The page went.
I went to ten, did I?
Yeah, there's the same strategy.
I was going to say that sounds.
Another action plan, however, however much we have to set.
Okay.
And this, and this speaks to that low, low line group of example, they say, every month, we provide, for example, I provide a detail list of all RFPs and savings compared to market value to the, to the budget finance committee, so participating in all of our costs, costing of our initiatives.
I'm going to page thirteen, if you jump to page thirteen.
All right, if everybody's here to page thirteen. All right, everybody's here to page thirteen.
I want to just try to keep it.
Yes, I want to make sure that we answer everybody's questions so if they agree, skip ahead. All right, so skipping ahead to thirteen, monitor external factors and develop long-range plans to ensure student services remain intact. Desireed result, research, review, develop a government efficiency plan that meets the savings requirements of one percent for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen tax and let, and we had this new initiative undertaken by the state. We haven't come out yet with full details of how this is all going to work. Even as well, our government individuals who had, you know, a, a, a lot of ties, can't seem to get a lot of information out of it. So this one, I just want you to know that there is sort of a question mark on how that is all going to unfold. And again, savings of one percent for the fifteen, sixteen levy, preparing and submitting tax levy limit efficiency plan. Establish a timeline to meet the submission requirements and follow the requirements set forth by the comptroller's office. Question about that one?
No, but I'm sorry, I do have a question on page eleven.
So happens you see.
Maximize resources through both public and private entities to allow us to better serve our students. Under measurable, how do we, how do we have control of our state aid? If the state aid is what the state aid is, additional revenues obtained in the form of state aid, under measurable. How do we, we don't have control over that, do we?
We're doing many of those studies and that.
Isn't it also the, uh, House of Good Shepherd taking place there? And isn't that state or federal funds that then flow to us?
Yes, but that's a little different. That's not what we're referring to really. We do get some additional outside revenue, so outside state, that will, things like that. But we don't have the full, the full replacements that those are counting as grants. So what we're talking about is more of like continually looking at grants that want to be available there, you know, that the ministry already knows. But we're constantly looking, we brought up solar, we're working on solar from up at least maybe, actually since October, trying to get some information. So, so solar grants, for example, to create efficiencies. So non-property tax revenues, um, looking at increasing interest rates as much as we can have different investment, interest, investment categories. Bob's working with foundation and more grants from the foundation making.
Isn't partially also often described, you know, to the budget finance is knowing when aid is flowing in specific categories and strategically planning things around those. So to that, in that respect, we do have a degree of control, obviously, but on our local level. But part of it is being smart, yeah, in terms of making sure that you're spending where you can get some money back as opposed to places where you need to.
So for example, we talked about a lot of technology, so just buying computers outright, using just all our budget. We're still using our budget, but we're purchasing from overseas instead of just own bidding. So not only are we participating with a larger group and account of scale, lower costs, but we're also obtaining additional revenue from our expenditure of paying. And that is the A category that happens to be flowing the last few years where eight years ago it wasn't. So we're sort of changing, strategizing, maximizing the A areas.
This is one of those ones that we're already doing, right? And there's no specific number attached to it, so it's not a goal. It's part of the, the plan.
I think the goal is to continue to look for, I think, you know, efficiencies for the district to, you know, cost-saving measures. So if there are grand opportunities, obviously you want to undertake those.
To increase revenues is the goal specifically.
Okay, it looks.
Of non-property tax revenues.
Was it a dollar or is it a hundred thousand dollars? I mean, again, you know, I'm looking at this not only as a goal to drive this, what we're going, but also as a performance measure for the administration.
We're going to develop these four departments, Sean, and whoever else has that. You guys are my example. We're going to use this to evaluate the industry. That's up to you. We've developed, right? We've developed a proper community organization for it. So this isn't about performance incentives for the organization.
It's not?
Not for me, it's, it's probably an organization for itself.
You're kidding?
That's, I'm not kidding, that's, that's for you.
Well, I thought we were, I thought this was all combined.
That's, that's up for you to make a determination out of. This right here is the increased non-tax property revenues. And we have opportunities to do that and try to maximize those in their, their ongoing throughout their continuous. And that was said in the report last week, I was mentioning in front of the letter, if you can hide, I just follow up a letter with it. And I have a follow-up every single month. Whether that's successful or not is out of my control, but I can put the effort in and do that if I will. You make that determination about performance incentives. I'm not, I'm not building this document for performance, so that's up to you.
Really? Okay, so because, you know, it's part of the, the agreement, it's part of the, the contract. This was the process to develop not just the goals, but aligned with performance.
That's, that's for you guys to decide, but I, I want to be right up front. This is not documented, we're putting it on your foot for performance.
Which is, which is, which is.
Which is.
That's good, that's, that's, that's fine, that's great.
Right, so.
We've got nothing associated with that yet.
We, we were overhauling the overall goal setting. Back, back when we had our retreat in June, July, and we said, you know what? Our goal-setting process is all screwed up. So we had Jamie come in and he walked us through how the board sets their goals. Okay, we ended up with those four main goals, okay? And the next step was for the administration to have action plans that they were.
To set smart goals.
Right. And so now this is Jamie coming back to continue that process. Then once we have that in place, then my understanding is the board looks at, out of those smart goals, how do we come up with the matrix for performance values?
Okay, that's fine, that's good. So, 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 all right, that's fine. So my, my, so my initial comment was that, that, that's great, but it's not a, for me, it's not a measurement of performance. That's all, that was my statement.
This, me, as superintendent, is a measurement of doing our organization for.
Okay, right, but it's not, but, but as, you know, my only statement was, as it's written, it's not a performance goal.
I mean, you, that wasn't a, you know, performance-based goal. Obviously, this document doesn't belong to them.
I thought that was the tie-in as well.
Well, and I think it should tie in, should tie. Like John said, take this, and now I have a better understanding of what they do. So you can say, okay, now you're, we can use these as measurements that we decide. But we only, we decide for, ah, Bob's deciding for the rest of his administrators. So are you using some stuff in here to determine?
Yeah, we have to evaluate this.
Okay, so you tied some of this stuff into when you evaluate your staff, correct?
When you find the external, external factor here, that and that evaluation.
Really what you have here is a nice document. Again, I don't want to be the performance piece of it, but if you're talking about accountability, you created an action plan. Actually, we're going to see this materialize. And part of that is through Bob and Bob's leadership through the district itself. And so if you want to use it for sort of evaluative purposes, really what you want to look at is what's that reporting? Are you coming up with? Are the people that, you know, who are responsible? Because I believe that we do want to attach sort of accountability to each one of these, to each term and where, you know, who will admit and also when it's in here. And so if you are talking about a little bit of performance, you're really looking at whether or not they're working towards these and how well these are progressing or whether or not this action plan is actually just for you. And then thrown into a desk and then the next day they pretend like this never happened. You know, the way that I like to look at this, I understand there are people who are diehard and want to attach, you know, a percentage and see the growth. The way that I always kind of refer, look at a goal-setting process, I can set a goal for myself. I want to lose fifteen pounds. I'm going to make it time bound, I'm going to do it in one month. In one month, I've lost fifteen pounds. Have I accomplished my goal? I have. But not if I gain a gap, right? So here is the question that I have to ask you, and this is really kind of what's encapsulated in here. Is there a bigger, larger overarching goal than you just losing fifteen pounds?
Depends, you know, wrestle.
Stay healthy?
I want to stay healthy, I want to be the way you are, all right? That's my big overarching goal. Through that, I create subcategories. And some of these you definitely can attach a percentage to and see the growth. And as Bob was kind of pointing out, some of this stuff you physically can't currently. In the future, as the year progresses, yes, you're going to be getting more information. A lot of this is going to be jelp for you and you're going to get a better clear picture. Some of this stuff, you just got to have faith that, listen, we're spending monies for professional development. For example, that's going to lead to better student performance. Can that be measured? Absolutely, it can, because you're going to look at student performance. And then you can tie it back to whether or not those professional development opportunities were successful or not. So there are means of measuring it. Sometimes it's not as simple as saying, we're going to move from point A to point B. So, you know, again, in the process here in the future, you know, once you've established a lot of these baselines, like this document is talking about measuring that growth, you know, can be reflected in here. And as you pointed out, then what is that? Yes, multi-year problems require multi-year solutions. And so some of this stuff is on year one, that, you know, again, establishing a baseline, that's what you're going to do in the first year. So when you sit down and you go through this process again, you now have that baseline. So the question now becomes, how do we take that to the next step? We have the data, now what can we do with that data? What can we put in place in order to see that overarching goal that we've established, you know, materialize?
From an organizational perspective, I don't want employees to lose that fifteen pounds inappropriately and then gain twelve pounds a month later into the next year. I want you to lose what's required or what's prescribed, not a, a pound per month, so you lose fifteen pounds by the end of the year. And it's sustainable.
I don't know what, what it's, that discussion, I don't know what that discussion is. So, 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 I mean, I have no idea where that's coming from. But, but I'm, and now I have a clearer picture here. So that when we're reiterating what we already know that we do, this is not part of a goal. This is just a reiteration of what we're doing. And, and that that's not going to be part of.
But I have grants that go out all the time. You might not even know about it. However, knowing, working with me as long as you have, you know that I'm going to go for as many of those as I can. If I think they're efficient, they are going to give us the resources that we need, the additional revenue, if it's really worth it.
But, but because we changed our goals, but because we changed our district goals or made some, nothing's changed. You're just doing what you've been doing.
Let me just kind of phrase this again. A lot of what this document provides you, the board, is a platform to ask questions. And what I mean by that is at the end of the year, you're taking a look at this action plan. You say, all right, our overarching, what we wanted to accomplish, our desired result is to maximize resources from public and private entities to allow us to better serve our students. That's the time when you turn to Mary and say, Mary, how has the district worked towards fulfilling that goal? Now, as kind of Mary pointed out, from year to year, that's going to change. It's going to vary. It's not the same static or stagnant, you know, set of processes that you go through on a yearly basis. And so things will materialize, things will disappear. And so really, what this is designed to do is to ensure the district is on course, that yes, in fact, Mary is looking for ways to improve efficiencies within the district and then have that information reported back to you.
That's being done today?
It's being done, correct. And so as we kind of pointed out in the beginning is that.
Or what increase strategies came about through this process?
Which is similar to what you have. We gave you the results.
Yeah, you gave us the results, right.
We still will, sorry. No, I was just going to say two things. One, I, I don't think just because it doesn't have a goal, it doesn't, it's not performance-related because coming back from the other side, if Mary wasn't doing this, it sure would be annoying. And I also think just because it's something that we've always been doing, doesn't mean that it's exclusive from being a goal. Because at some point, if we're doing everything, then I guess we'll have no goals because I'll do stuff that we've always been doing.
Well, that's exactly it. I mean, because I, all of us work so hard. If you want to, so I guess a good data comparison is look at maybe another district that doesn't do any of these things. So, so I feel like we've really worked to try, we say, oh, the low line group and other, other group on the tree. So we've, but we've already worked really hard. We've already cut, we've, we've done, we've found many new strategies, efficiencies, all of that. We've worked really hard. That's how we've been able to, to go to Bob's point, maintain class sizes through the worst of all times ever to be able to, you know, provide the, the instruction that we've provided to our students because of all of the extra things that we've done. So we have to constantly, every single year, say, you want, I think what you're saying, Ed, is you want me to say, increase revenues by two hundred thousand dollars.
Nope. If you want that as a goal, yes. But if it's just something that you're saying, hey, this is what we do, this is what we're going to do, but as far as the perform, and we don't. But again, now I'm just totally just because this is not a performance-oriented thing. So we can put whatever you want in it. I mean, but it's not going to drive, you know, the, the idea behind smart goals, the idea behind the specific measurable goals is to drive performance in the direction of the organization. And if that doesn't exist, then it's not a goal. That's just smart goals, James.
Bob's statement is true. Over the years, the board had set goals, some were met, some were not met. But they never used the goals to evaluate the administration. Those were, there was never their intent. So it was never used.
But I think that the point, I think the point was, you know, of mine was, I think the point that Bob was making, and I commend him for it, is that this isn't a document that was built in Bob's best interest. The document was built in the district's best interest. And then it's up to the board to then take this and say, of these goals, this whole document, which again, is in the district's best interest, what are the things that we want to say, geez, Bob, you know what? I'm just going to, this is in front of me, I don't, we didn't increase non-property tax revenues. In fact, there were six grants that, that came about that we didn't get because we didn't even meet the deadline. What the heck happened here? And then maybe that's something that we refuse, but that's something that the board does. I don't expect, I wouldn't want as a, as a board member to have Bob say, yeah, I put together this document. These are all the things you can measure me on, I'll let you know how it goes. How does this relate to what's good for the district, Bob? Well, I didn't make it built for the district. This is just what I want to be evaluated on. I want, I want a document that's what is in the best interest of the district and moves the district forward. And then we can decide as a board, that's our responsibility. On what of those, of all of them, I don't care, I mean, I care, but of how we want to use that to evaluate it. But I wouldn't want Bob to build a document for me that is just Bob's performance goals. I want, I want to see aspirational goals and, and plans to the district in ways that we can move the district forward.
And that's fine, and that's great. I mean, absolutely, that's great. Other than page six and seven, it is a reiteration of what we're doing and what we've been assessing in our committees. And that's okay. Just want to make sure that, that now that I know it's not performance-related, now I'm cool with it. Because I'm sitting here thinking, okay, well, we're already doing that. There's no specific measurement, so how do, how do we bet? That's great.
I don't think that it's not performance-related, it's not that it's built like that.
We're already doing it, it's already been done, it's no, you know. These things are not easy to perform, to, to, right? The, the revenues, because we are limited to what revenues we have. State aid, property taxes, and everything else is miscellaneous. And everything else being miscellaneous, we have to do a lot of dollars in order to minimize property taxes and address an eight point two billion, million-dollar gap, or gap one, as you told me. While we have not laid off one staff member in the district and not created any programs that did not have to be eliminated because of numbers.
I got that. And you've mentioned that for two years, and that's okay. But two percent caps limit is the goal, that's fine. And that's again, another action.
Continuing doing that is not something that we can just say, oh, we've always done this, so we won't continue.
That's not what I'm saying, Bob.
So we're just saying, we, we were already doing that.
That's not what I'm saying.
So let's just keep on track.
Absolutely. One of the things that I'll just throw this out there is that, you know, I think that I would check carefully if you're going to try to build in performance indicators within here and assign them to specific individuals. You know, to kind of answer your point, Ed, I think that from this document, you can extract performance indicators. And that would be kind of the next step that we're going along with this. And sort of what John was saying is this is sort of step one, and then the next phase would be.
See, I didn't know this step process, I thought this was it.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know we were in a step process.
And did I understand you correctly?
Yeah, and that was always my understanding was this was how we were going to achieve the goals that the board set, our four goals. This is how we're going to achieve them. And then out of that would be the board then on our own come up with some type of performance.
I thought it was just going to be a collaborative effort and everybody agrees?
So again, you know, as I was kind of pointing out, from this document, you can extract what you're looking for. And I think that's, you know, your input is very valuable in that next phase when you're already determined, okay.
It will be collaborative, I hope it's collaborative coming up to the.
Great. I just want to know what we're doing first.
All right, so we good on that one? If we can move forward now, if we were up to, did we answer your question? We did, a while back.
Oh, right, yes. I'm on fourteen now.
Page eleven.
I'm on page two. Let's see here. Uh, so we did page, monitor external factors, we did that. Object tax levy, twenty-first century learning facilities.
Page fourteen.
To around fourteen. All right, fiscal responsibility, monitor external factors, develop long-range plans to ensure student services remain.
Everything is relating to the staff. That's so they remain healthy, so we have the same staff members teaching the kids.
So the goal is the fiscal, remember? So what it is, is to, for example, this year, the committee has talked about what other, we're always trying to brainstorm on what health areas we can make people healthier because we're self-insured. And whatever indication of things we provide will reduce the amount of expenditures that are going out of the budget.
So that's just, my question is how, is to how it ensures student services remain intact?
But you don't have to spend the money on health insurance because, why don't you pay the health tax?
Exactly. So if we don't have to spend a hundred thousand dollars on our health insurance bills that go out because we're self-insured.
Thank you. Or whatever it is that's, you know, takes a lot of.
Fifteen. Again, monitor external factors, evaluate managed taxes, security matters, and payments of pilot agreements to mitigate an impact on program staffing and tax payer, remember, very important, word here. Questions, input, or was satisfied, maybe this is, they got for us.
I'll have less comments when I get hungry.
This is the draft response, you know, and only as a keeping in tag with the same sort of passing.
Community relations, home stretch. Strategy one, employ multiple methods of communication to provide timely and useful information to your heart for community to foster involvement in public trust. The desired result, they're going to over. in public trust, the desired result, again, I won't read through all of this, inform our school community and foster a partnership regarding educational initiatives and student assessment requirements, and again, it's kind of laid out in terms of how that's going to be accomplished, and the next one, going down to desired result, we want these to get, and this is the necessary, achieve ninety-five percent student participation rate in grades three through eight, PLA and mathematics assessments, um, and again, if you look underneath the measurable, decrease test refusal numbers by twenty-five percent.
I got a problem with this whole column, row, sorry.
All right.
I think it's a losing battle, what's going on locally, statewide and nationally, I just think we need more and more people against it, and so put in ninety-five percent or twenty-five percent.
Ninety-five percent is the desired result, we have, we have to state it as the desired result, and yet we struggle with this ourselves, all, all we still have, our, 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 our population, and, and we struggle with this one ourselves.
And that number comes from...
The ninety-five percent?
Yeah.
That's in order to be AYP.
For your participation.
Yeah, and this is a smart goal, so we have the desired result, and we have the smart actions, a lot of those.
Say AYP again?
AYP, AYP.
And decrease test refusal numbers by twenty-five percent.
Would they make, make a switch to ninety-five?
No.
So that still wouldn't get us...
Paul, Paul. I was just going to say, you know, again, we're trying to communicate with, like, during community shared opportunities, dialogue with parents regarding, and assessments, um, we did that last year, but you can't, and again, this is where we get into, just like some of the other dialogue we had, we are an external factor, we are under control, but we still have to try and, or that, we still have to put this down, regardless, but you're right, it's all over the place, you know, the performance score, and again, if there are activities, whatever, in that condition, we have to move forward.
King was banned from Werslaw, huh?
Pardon?
King was banned from Werslaw, huh?
No, I don't think so.
Right now, yeah, but, it's, it's, you can't just...
I have to say, I'm falling out.
If, if in fact, I agree with you guys, but if in fact, we can't be blaming our test scores on lack of participation, if that's not a goal, okay, I don't, you know, we shouldn't hear, that's because the smart kids didn't take the tests.
Again, we have to do something, we have to provide opportunity to the population.
No, I like this one, to be that the goal that you can say, okay, attempt on number two, but do something about it, one thing's good.
Moving on to seventeen then?
No, seventeen was struck.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Oh, tragic.
Oh, sorry.
It should say, I have, I have seen it.
Oh, it should be said, one...
Okay, I got it, don't worry, I got it, Charles got the trace.
All right.
There's the correct answer.
Paul and I were on the same...
Strategy, employ multiple methods?
Yes.
All right, so I do have the...
I heard strike, and I struck.
We're page sixteen, this is...
The women gathered.
Yeah, normally we say... All right, so, strategy, employ multiple methods of communication, and again, desired result, elevate teaching and learning to inspire all students so they graduate college and career-ready, how is this specific, we want to inspire parents, teach as a community, and embrace the aspects of twenty-first century educational system, measurable, obtainable, and again, you're looking at efforts to increase participation from parent and community level, which translates into student achievement, comments, feedback?
I just, I was so powerful, I don't know who's, who, I should interrupt this question too, but can you, is there a connection between the ninety-five percent student participation rate and this twenty-first century educational system idea, I mean, is this, is this like a pro, a lack of, or a pro like common core workshop, or is it really talking about technology and, I mean, more of what we have discussed about...
First one, when we, communication, ads, internal workshops that we offer, this one right here, and obviously, the desired result is ninety-five percent, why don't we get there, and force people, send your students, and... The second is a direct response that Bill Daggett's going to be coming to our area, sponsored by another goal system, which is going to be education, perhaps we're preparing to do like common courses, so we're going to provide that out to them, and we, all we can really measure there is we exhaust all multiple communication channels to get people to hear why it's important for twenty-first century...
But Bill Daggett, this is a side note, he doesn't advocate specifically for the common core, but he advocates for our higher standards, and so that, you know, that comes through, I've seen him speak a number of times, he's phenomenal, he really...
Absolutely.
He comes across with all sorts of different data to kind of really show that instructional methods are changing, you know, kind of getting on that path.
I don't want to speak for Lisa, but she's made it clear that, I mean, we got to hold up our end on that, but, you know, regarding the community relationships committee.
Eighteen, all right, strategy two, promote communication and collaboration with local officials to facilitate efficiencies, the two desired results, offer deals, collaborate, partner, and create synergy to accomplish district-wide endeavor, endeavors, the second one, partner fatigue, provide district initiatives, engage parental involvement, questions, feedback. Read on us. Uh, promote a culture of safety that supports and sustains a safe, nurturing, respectful environment, desired result, promote culture of safety, positive behaviors, and raise awareness of systems, practices, and procedures, questions, feedback. I'll come to that one. Twenty, build capacity, the means to the art technology advances through continuous improvement, planning and review of staffing and facility needs, including personnel and training in with the technology component here, our desired result is to expand network capacity and speeds to ensure higher levels of connectivity and less network congestion, continually upgrade equipment and systems to meet future needs, and this one does have a specific measurable, increase speed by twenty-five percent.
Oh, sure, you're going to make that twenty-five percent?
As long as we get our smart money, we'll make it fifty percent. Shh. Sorry, Bob.
That's exactly what I figured.
It's on tape.
And if we don't get it, one point three percent.
Moving forward, desired result, full complement of highly-trained district IT staff aligned to support district-wide technology initiatives, our measurable monthly work order reports, response time decreased by fifteen percent.
How fast or slow is it now?
Uh, really, I, I can get that data pulling it from our help desk system, on average, it's probably taking almost a week to get to a repair, depending on, on what type of repair it is, and with, with this increase, I'm, I'm confident that we can decrease that to about a day to two days for any type of repair. Right now, if it's a computer, if it's a smart board, it's, it's within a twenty-four hour period, maybe if it's a projector or some other piece of equipment, it may take three to four days for us to get to it, but with this, I'm, I'm very confident that we can decrease that to one to two days maximum time for repair.
Is this dependent on smart money also?
No.
So I change to fifty percent screening, and fifty percent response time.
All right, technologies, implement, uh, technology plan to support district, district initiatives, and our innovative teaching practices, our desired result, enhance curriculum instruction through the acquisition of new technology, need to prepare all students with the necessary twenty-first century technology, knowledge, and skills, um, again, kind of looking through here, we do have their specifics in here in terms of what's going to be accomplished.
Forty-eight initiatives?
This is the, that's the present.
SIT people, they're achievers.
Three years.
That, that was that group of forty-eight people were on that committee, that's why.
They had their own initiative.
It was huge, more than we'd stated.
Tic-tac.
All right, we good on that one? Okay, uh, number twenty-three, implement technology plans for district initiatives, so our desired result, further diversify instruction through the use of technology to deliver the classroom approach to learning, um, it's specific to the ConAvenue for elementary and high-class, and you have our measurable, questions, feedback.
Is this, is this something that, I, I know we've talked about it, I, I, now it's, this is what we have to do, is this something that ties directly into increasing test scores to seven percent?
No.
No?
No, this is more our, we'll talk a little bit forward, which is...
Okay.
Utilize technology in daily play for district operations, desired result, maintain a safe and secure network, application system to the district to continually increase redundancy data entry rates and increase security. I'm a true IT person. I might really here want to decrease time to add new accounts and update accounts on the network system by fifty percent.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Can you read that?
Oh, yeah.
Questions, comments, concerns? All right, twenty-five, utilize technology in daily play, our desired result, provide safe and efficient transportation for the students of the Hartford, specifically the installation and training of network equipment, transportation routing, scheduling system, to go and increase efficiency for the bus planning and scheduling by fifteen percent. CJ, I believe you said, Ken, provide information to show that measure.
How much? How much does that save?
The fifteen percent, it's just going to actually improve communication with parents and with the buildings, except, it's not going to save you dollars, we're not going to reduce the position by fifteen percent.
Bus from planning and scheduling, okay, I mean, we're not cutting, so we're not cutting miles down, we're not cutting buses out, we're not cutting out time with...
Oh, we may end up, once it's all done, we may end up being able to, to combine routes.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the problem.
Yeah.
So this is equipment, software we have already?
It's software that we, we just purchased, we were just going through training, it won't be implemented until, I believe, over February, February.
We're working on it now to get it finalized and implemented, yes.
We had software place, this, but it was old, old, old version, so, this is the newest version updated, so...
The buses will be late after February.
All right, quick recap, because I know you're all very eager, so I won't waste, I won't speak, I have to link up in a second, encapsulate the conversation that we have here, one of the things that came out is that we'd like a different format for these goals to be presented, I can definitely have, number two, we'd like it scaled back, so it's not twenty-five pages, number three, the takeaway that we're going to hear is that things that are being implemented within the district currently, or are things that are being undertaken, maybe find a way to shorten them, still have them part of the document, but highlight more the things that are being currently undertaken, that are not part of, I guess, the routine of the school, correct?
Well, and I don't think it has to be shortened, because if, as long as it's a different format, because, you know, I, I think there is some value for us seeing everything that goes into making sausage sometimes, there's a lot of hard work behind that, so, exactly, so...
Was there anything that I missed?
The accountability.
Oh, the accountability, that's right, yes.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, thanks, George, it was great, thank you, Bob.
I really appreciate you guys inviting me to that.
Thank you, I'm just going to...
Room after that saying, we go back and do some sort of interpretation, so, I'll have time to talk to some of the initial reactions sometimes, as in...
This is all cut off, it's almost a big deal.
Thank you, guys.
It goes this way, and it goes this way, okay? This is the summary of...
All right, we're going to, we're going to take a ten-minute recess, well, we're going to close our working group.